Good morning. I believe it's 8:31 and time to get started on our board meeting for April. Thank you so much for everybody turning out this morning, and I need to find my first notes. You'd think I'd have this all memorized by now, but I don't. All right. So as I say, welcome to the meeting. We're all here. Board chair. And maybe a few extra people online. I'm board chair Libby Garvey. My vice chair is here, Dr. Karen Thomas. Members Matt DeFranti, Susan Cunningham, Maureen Coffey, thank you for being here. Masks are optional. If you'd like to wear a mask, you're absolutely welcome to, and the clerk, I think, has some if you need any. Couple of quick announcements. For in-person speakers, that podium goes up and down, so if it's not quite a good height for you, there's a button on your right, correct, that you can push and bring it up and down. If you've got documents, please submit them to the clerk with your name and number. If you are remote, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you're called on to speak, and you'll need to unmute yourself using star six on the phone or clicking on the microphone button on the toolbar. There is a Spanish-language interpreter available for public comment, I believe. Is our interpreter here to introduce themselves in English and Spanish, please?
I believe we are missing our interpreter.
We maybe do not have a Spanish interpreter. All right. If you need interpretation, let us know. We have at least one board member who can sort of help out, but it would not be great interpretation. I don't know. Maybe it would be great, Mr. Karen Thomas.
I will try.
But you will pitch it. You will pitch it. Thank you. Occasionally, we all here need to get up and stretch our legs, which you may see us doing that, and I think we will go ahead and hear from our speakers. To make sure that we can hear from a range of topics, this is the time to hear, for us to hear not about things that are not on the agenda. We only have one speaker per topic, but if you're here with as a group, you're very welcome to go like this and show your, or stand up and show your support for the person speaking. There are, of course, a lot of ways to let us know what you're thinking about. You can write to us. You can come to Open Door Monday, which is every Monday evening. You can sign up for those and do that online and talk with us. You can make an appointment to come in, send us an email, or run into us in the grocery store, which sometimes happens. All right. I think with that, we are ready to get started. Would you like to call the first speaker, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first speaker is Daniel Chowuski, followed by Sam Lavison.
Back in February, I called on the board to pass a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza, noting that a growing number of local governments have been doing so. I was encouraged to instead contact our federal representatives and told that it is not the role of the county board to weigh in on international affairs. However, this is false. Last year, shortly after the October 7th attack, then-county board chair Christian Dorsey made a statement on behalf of the board regarding the attack, stating, quote, "We can say unequivocally that we condemn all the violence that has been targeted at noncombatants and civilians that has caused many to be kidnapped and many to be murdered, and we hope that the violence deescalates quickly without further loss of significant life to civilian populations there," end quote. As the number of civilians killed in Gaza continues to grow daily, with the number of children killed in Gaza over the past several months already surpassing the number of children killed in every other global conflict over the past four years combined, and with a recent UN-backed report announcing that famine in Gaza is imminent, with 1.1 million Palestinians experiencing catastrophic levels of food insecurity as Israel bombs aid workers, I can think of no better way for the board to stand by those words than by calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire. Moreover, there are currently efforts in Alexandria to push its city council to pass a ceasefire resolution, with the Alexandria Human Rights Commission recently issuing a recommendation to the council for it to pass such a resolution. Those involved in these efforts have noted the unique position the city is in to exert pressure for a ceasefire on the federal government, given its proximity to DC and it being the home of many federal politicians, conditions which also apply to Arlington, particularly given that we're the home of Secretary of State Antony Blinken. As such, I am once again calling for the board to pass a resolution supporting an immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza, and this time, I'm not alone. I have Arlington for Palestine with me. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Lavison, Lavison, followed by Scott Gruber.
Good morning. So 2023 was the hottest year by, on record, by far in modern record-keeping, and January 26th, 2024, was the hottest day on record in January in Washington DC. As I'm sure the vast majority of people here would agree, global warming is real and a very serious threat to us all. One thing I personally would like to see more of in Arlington is a more robust organic recycling program or composting, which, of course, would help reduce at least some greenhouse gas emissions. But even more importantly, you know, I've seen on my phone since October, hundreds of thousands of tons, not even pounds, but tons of greenhouse gases be emitted through the dropping of countless 2,000-pound bombs on Palestine. While, of course, the environmental impact of these bombings is exponentially worse over in Palestine than here in Arlington, these greenhouse gases will only continue to fuel global warming for us all, including here in Arlington. This will include increasingly hot days, increasingly dire rainstorms and hurricanes, and lengthier periods of drought, among other things. And ultimately, the people who will bear the brunt of these impacts are not, are unhoused neighbors and neighbors in low-income housing, as well as, of course, the natural environment here. So I'm urging you from a, primarily a climate change and global warming perspective, to issue a resolution that calls for stopping the US- and Israel-supported genocide of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Gruber, followed by William Walls.
All right. Good morning. So before I start my comments, I'd just like to register my strong support for a ceasefire resolution, and I stand here today in solidarity with all those here who are calling for justice and peace in Palestine. But I'm actually here today to talk about a different resolution, because unlike more than 80 countries around the world, the United States does not have a universal healthcare system. And while we spend $4.5 trillion annually on healthcare, that's one out of every $5 spent in the United States, we have some of the worst health indicators among peer countries in terms of life expectancy, maternal mortality, chronic illness, and premature death. An estimated 68,000 people a year die prematurely because our healthcare system is rooted in profit and not public health. And even here in Arlington, one of the wealthiest communities in the country, we have more than 12,000 people uninsured. We have thousands more underinsured, particularly amongst our Hispanic and immigrant communities. According to the Alice Index, more than 30,000 households in Arlington struggle to afford basics such as housing, food, clothing, and medical care. That forces many residents to put off primary care appointments, cancel prescriptions due to financial concerns. If we had a national, single-payer, universal healthcare system, nobody would be forced to make those choices. Nobody would have to worry about networks, or premiums, or deductibles, or co-pays. Nobody would have to worry about medical debt. And Arlington would save $40 million a year not having to fund health insurance plans for employees. I think that would be pretty good in budget season like now. So I call on the board to adopt a Medicare-for-all resolution, as our neighbors in Alexandria did just last month, and show the country that Arlington supports healthcare as a human right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. And I probably should have said at the beginning, because I think some of you are new here, we're not commenting as we listen to the speakers, but we will comment at the end on everybody, all right? So we will be making comments. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is William Walls, followed by Andrew Schoen.
Oh, I didn't realize the timer started. Can you restart the time?
You need to go ahead and start speaking, sir.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Garvey, and other board members. Thank you for having us and listening to us. I have provided the board with two documents why Arlington should commemorate the Palestinian Nakba in 1948 and the text of a possible resolution. As you can see on the screen, there is the comments. When Israelis are celebrating Independence Day on May 15th, Palestinians continue to grieve the loss of their homes, their land, and their communities. Palestinians refer to the events of 1948 as the Nakba, the catastrophe.
Mr. Walls?
Yes, ma'am.
We have heard speakers about this resolution. We will be talking about it. We do have another meeting to get through. We have other people here to speak. Perhaps we'll take the next speaker and see if anyone is talking about something other than Palestine, and we'd like to take them first to honor our, the way we handle things, and, because it's really not fair.
But it is a different topic.
It's not really a different topic. So I, 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 here, here, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this, and we will address it. But thank you very much. Let's take the next speaker, because it's fair to the other people who've come. There's a reason that we have these, these standards for how we handle things. And I think it might be the same topic.
Good morning, board members. I'm a volunteer tenant organizer in Arlington in Northern Virginia, because rents continue to rise and housing conditions in apartments where working-class people live continue to deteriorate. Something you may find surprising is that rent for a modest old apartment unit in Northern Virginia is not that much less expensive than rent for a luxury apartment building that isn't near a metro station. And what premium do working-class people get for these $100 of savings per month? They get cockroaches, plumbing issues, mold, unpredictable air conditioning, and even in some cases, bed bugs. On top of that, when tenants speak up to the landlord, they're often scolded as complainers, and in the worst cases, threatened with eviction, which can be explicit or carried out as a silent eviction, where the landlord chooses not to renew their lease, and in many cases, even threatened with deportation in the case of our undocumented brothers, sisters, and siblings. Arlington County can actively intervene by making housing a right, not just housing, but dignified housing. The county can task a small department to invite working-class people to share their experiences of their housing and help them collectively confront landlords who exploit their tenants. We want no slum lords in Arlington County. Furthermore, the Arlington County Board can take a stand on the housing rights of anyone whose rights to dignified housing has been stolen from them, whether it be in Arlington, someone who works in Arlington as a maid, or a Gazan starving in a refugee camp. Board members, you have an elevated position in Virginia's government and the Democratic Party extending all the way to the top of that party to put a stop for the, to the funding of this genocide. We're only one county just across the river from our nation's capital, but we can join the well over 100 districts and jurisdictions in this country who resolves for a ceasefire now.
Thank you, Mr. Schoen.
Our next speaker is Jesse Rifkin, followed by Dima Hakura. Jesse Rifkin.
Jesse.
Okay. Dima.
Next speaker. Dima Hakura is here. Dima?
I wasn't sure if the person was here. Good morning. Dispersed across the county, Arlington has racial and ethnic restrictive covenants in its property deeds. In 1968, Fair Housing Act voided them. A sample is shown above. Many target African-Americans and Semites, defining Semites to include Armenians, Jews, Hebrews, Persians, and Syrians. Syrians at the time refers to Arabs of Greater Syria. That includes Lebanese, Palestinians, and Jordanians. So I ask, why did the county board choose to adopt the controversial working definition for antisemitism of the International Holocaust Rememberers Alliance, the IHRA, on June 21st, 2022, when Arlington already had its own definition that it used actively to discriminate in its own racist past? I ask, I address hate, to address hatred and discrimination, we need to use the same definition that read it in our county. Since Arlington adopted the IHRA definition, the American Bar Association rejected it. The United Nations also resisted. In a letter to the UN, over 100 international civil society organizations, including Beeth Salim, Human Rights Watch, Amnesty International, and the ACLU, warned that the IHRA definition weaponization and dangers. Even Ken Stern, the American Jewish Committee's antisemitism expert and one of its main authors, came out against adoption, as it was never intended to be used as a legal definition. The IHRA definition is a vague, poorly phrased, and overly broad, necessitating to resort to its examples, which are politicized, weaponized, and labeled criticism of Israel as antisemitic, thereby stifling free speech, protest, and legitimate discourse on the actions and policies of a foreign nation. The past six months have brought the ramifications of such a definition into stark reality, while the world witnessed massacres and the slaying of innocent children on an almost daily basis. I urge you to promptly rescind the county board's resolution of the IHRA definition and instead adopt the Arlington definition for antisemitism that directly pertains to its own racism. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jyot Shani, followed by Audrey Clement.
I'm a local junior at Washington High School. I transferred from Florida this past August. Basketball is a part of my life. I've been playing for the past six years. I have a mother who's played in college and a cousin who currently plays in college in India. Recently, I've been trying to go to Thomas Jefferson Works Center every Tuesday and Thursday to try to play. I've been told that it's dangerous because I could get hurt by growing adults other, but I've found that the people there on other days and other times are much younger, and I'm at more of a risk of hurting them compared to my size, my ability, as compared to playing with adults. I believe I'm not going to stop playing for the next 30 years, or at least being involved in some aspects. I'm a local AP and IB student, as well as tutoring middle schoolers and offering college counseling advice, but part-time job in Arlington, and I'm currently in a VFW Boy Scout Flag Retirement Project for the next two months. There's multiple ways that I benefit the Arlington community, so I'm confused as to why I can't gain one of the biggest aspects of my life by playing an adult night. I've offered to pay a fee, a membership, or any sort of aspect, but I've been denied every week, so I'm confused what else I can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Randall Humm.
On April 17th, I was invited to participate in a county board candidate forum organized by three Pentagon City civic organizations. I decided to walk the walk by taking transit to the event held at Amazon HQ2 on South 15th Street. The weather was balmy, and my metro connections at rush hour were excellent, if crowded. Biking through the throngs of workers and shoppers from Pentagon City Metro to HQ2 was thoroughly enjoyable. The well-appointed community center at HQ2 was notable for its understatement. All six candidates showed up for the forum. The questions were on point, the hosts were gracious, and the audience was attentive. On the return trip, my connections were good, but I was tired by the time I got to East Falls Church Metro, where I boarded a 2A bus back to Westover. At the corner just outside my apartment building, I barely noticed that I was followed off the bus by a male hunched over in a maroon jacket. As I removed my bike from the rack, the bus operator motioned to me and said, "Watch out." He waited a few minutes to see that I was safe before pulling away. In a recent county board work session, police chief Andy Penn revealed that assaults are up 9% since last year. But for the bus driver's alertness, I might have been another statistic. While I'm happy that a black bus driver's street smarts got me safely off the bus, I wonder why the woke activists who have defunded the police think the lawlessness that it inspires doesn't throw other people under the bus. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randall Humm.
My name is Randall Humm. I have lived in Arlington for 30 years and have completed 35 years of federal service, including the last 21 years doing oversight of federal law enforcement agencies, most particularly the FBI, as an attorney and a member of an Office of Inspector General. A common problem for oversight organizations such as inspectors general is the withholding of information by the component that is under review or investigation. This is often accomplished by failing to provide oversight staff access to complete case files or redacting information from documents. Previously at the federal level, many offices of inspector general were facing such problems with their agencies. As a result, in 2016, Congress passed and President Obama signed into law the Inspector General Empowerment Act that put an end to the kinds of practices that I believe the police auditor and police oversight board are now experiencing from Arlington County. The Inspector General Act now provides that IGs are authorized to have timely access to all records, documents, or other materials they need to fulfill their responsibilities. If even a portion of what appeared in the recent Arlington Now article is true, you are putting at great risk the effectiveness and credibility of the police auditor and police oversight board's work. This is especially true for internal complaints. The police auditor and oversight board should have full access to all relevant documents and case files in possession of the police department and should be entitled to the full scope of what is allowed for under Virginia law. It is unfortunate for me to say, but your current practice appear to fall so far below professional norms for doing oversight work that the public should have serious concerns about the confidence they can place in the oversight regime you have established. This is especially unfortunate, as I know the board has put in a great deal of effort to build credible mechanisms for police oversight. Please reassess your approach for the good of the community and the police department.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Humm. All right. Does that conclude our speakers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We heard from a number of speakers. Appreciate everybody coming in today. Thank you. Mr. Chowuski, you started with, and you have been here before, and you have reached out to us. Thank you so much for coming in. The board has, we've replied quite accurately that we do not handle international relations. I think all of us have contacted our congressional representatives. I've talked to Congressman Byer. I have contacted Senator Tim Kaine and Mark Warner. We are actually at the moment in, I think, all of us had hoped that what's going on in Gaza would have ended long ago. It keeps thinking that seems that sanity will prevail, and it does not. I think that statement by Mr. Dorsey back in, back last year in the fall, that we condemn all violence and hope for de-escalation, still applies. We are in the process of considering how we might appropriately actually do take a stand and make it clear, and what I believe we will be doing is issuing a letter or a statement in support of Congressman Byer's stand. He has been very clear on where he is, so that's the approach that we're planning to take at this moment. We appreciate you coming in. I think we are all absolutely appalled and horrified at what is going on. Colleagues, anybody else want to add anything at this moment? Ms. Coffey?
Yeah. You know, I think when Chair Dorsey made comments in October, obviously, the global climate was slightly different. Events that are happening now hadn't yet occurred, but I don't think that there, I don't think that there is a way for me to feel comfortable not saying anything at this point, and I think we are working on the appropriate way to approach this as a local government, as, as a group that does not have literal authority over any sort of international affairs. Where is it appropriate in the conducting of our business to situate this? And that's what we're working through right now, but conversations are happening. I really appreciate folks being here. You know, I think we need, we need to free the hostages on both sides. Bombing needs to stop. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming today. There is something that we need to recognize there, and I saw Dima Hakura here, who I know is from Gaza. And she's not the only one here in Arlington. There are many Arlingtonians. Every single crisis, whether it is Sudan, Ethiopia, for many years, by the way, still ongoing in Tigray, et cetera, this, the Ukraine, these are conflicts that affect local people, local families, who are, you know, worried sick about their people there. So in that sense, we are absolutely not immune or remote. So this is why it takes always a very difficult, it is very difficult for us to, you know, figure out a way to, to take a stance, et cetera. Of course, we are not an international body. We, we don't have a foreign policy competence here, and so we are going to be very careful with this. But we are a local government, and we care a lot about the fate of civilians, innocent civilians. That includes kids and, and noncombatants, et cetera. And we have seen that in, as of lately, in this type part of the century, that innocent civilians are targeted all the way, and they have been actually become, they have become the, you know, the main victim and the main of warfare. This is unacceptable. So for that reason, I also support finding appropriate language and also making clear, and that's for me also very important, that we name also those who have started this in, with an absolutely unacceptable attack on October 7th. They are not exempt from scrutiny either. So we need to, to look at this, and we need to, to take a stand, stand that stands behind civilian, of civilian victims and innocent people.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
I would just like to support the work that we're doing to lobby our federal leaders, and a number of us, maybe all of us probably will be with several of them this evening in each time, make sure to, to push harder for ending the violence. I also want to really underscore that one place that we very much do have the responsibility and the influence pertaining to this is here at home, ensuring that we are doing everything we can to fight hate speech. And I appreciate you bringing up the question of the definition. I did not know that, but I know as we are all hurting about international events, as well as continuing to work through our own domestic challenges, we need to care for one another. We need to be on the watch and speak up when we see something, and that goes from our two-year-olds on up to our 110-year-olds. So I call on all of us to make sure that we are being gentle with each other and supporting each other, listening, and fighting hate throughout our community, whatever form it may take.
Thank you. Mr. DeFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My colleagues have spoken very well on it, starting with our chair. I think first and foremost, those of you who've come today need to hear that we are listening deeply to the concerns you've raised, and I think we've each tried to express that. Really appreciate the chair's description of the balance that we are seeking to find. Many international issues are not ones that I think this body should have opinions on. This clearly is at a different spot, and so I do believe that action is appropriate, as our chair has described, and I think each of us has, has made strong points. For me, it's perhaps the children that are most concerning, and so that the famine is of concern, and, and the fatalities are particularly of concern, though every life is of concern. But thank you for being here. I do think that we need to take all opportunities, and thanks for the way forward, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you. So we will be pursuing that. We've been a little busy with our budget. It's great to see so many of you here. I'm glad you're organizing, because you're, you're organizing and demonstrating and being out in public and lobbying your federal government is absolutely what should be done. Thank you. I think the favorite statement I heard from someone who was said, "What side are you on?" Response was, "I'm on the side of humanity." I think we're all on the side of humanity. And with that, I'm going to continue, actually, talking about how I think we support humanity with the next comments. We've got a budget coming up, and people have talked to us about a lot of issues that we are working on, so let me continue here. Sam Lavison came in and talked about the issue of the day, but also more robust recycling. We do do a fair amount of recycling. We do composting, and we actually have a new, pretty cool, innovative, I keep jumping, and we haven't had the presentation yet, but coming online, we're going to be trying a pilot, which is for multifamily dwellings. It's a smart compost bin outside that people can use, that anybody can put their compost in, and we're going to be piloting that. We're looking constantly for more ways to, to recycle and to compost. We do have quite a robust compost system, and actually, you can get dirt from Arlington County, I think. Good dirt and good, good recycling if you want for your lives, which comes from here. So we're creating, we're creating that. Mr. Gruber talked about the healthcare system and the need for a national healthcare system. We are all acutely aware of that. We do have the Arlington Free Clinic here, which we support, and there's And there's quite a bit through DHS that we do. There is money in our budget for them, which you will see. Our public health director, Dr. Ruben Varghese, actually has really championed the issue of the disparities in health, showing how on one side of the street and the other, there's going to be a disparity of 10 years in health expectancy, in life expectancy. So we are working on that. We are very aware of it. And absolutely, if we could have a healthcare system, it would save, yes, the employee, the money we spend on employees, but more the amount we do put into helping all of the people in Arlington who do not have proper healthcare. We do try to do that as best we can. It is very expensive. And that's another thing that we could all be lobbying our national federal officials about. I'm sorry, I should stop. If anybody, colleagues, just let me know if you've got something you'd like to add. Mr. Karen Tonas?
Just Mr. Gruber, the comment about the $40 million that Arlington County would not spend if we had a universal healthcare system. This is not entirely accurate. We, universal healthcare system is still an insurance system. It's just broadly available, so therefore, it's more efficient in terms, in fiscal terms. Now, our nation is spending more than 18% of GDP for healthcare services while having, you know, you know, less, less presentable outcomes than equivalent or comparable nations that spend a fraction of that because they have a universal healthcare system.
Thank you. And then Andrew Shun came in talking about the need for dignified housing for everyone. We absolutely support affordable housing. We do quite a bit with that. And that, again, we're going to be adding more in our budget if you want to stay and listen to that. I think the issue you were particularly talking about was conditions in units and the need to monitor. And we did, that did fall off during the pandemic. It is, I believe, picking up now. And I will invite our manager. I don't know if he's got anything he'd like to add on that. Mr. Schwartz, sorry to put you on the spot here.
I'm sorry, because I was reading something from an earlier comment. What was the specific comment you were doing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's the, it's the fair house and monitoring the conditions in our affordable housing units.
Right. So we have, yeah, so we have, in my proposed budget, and I, hopefully, the board's going to accept that, we have increased the number of inspections that we do to, actually, we're doing, our goal is to get to 100% of all the units over a three- or four-year period. We have hired additional contract staff, and we have inspections being done by our housing bureau staff and also by our human services staff. And we've gotten excellent cooperation from our housing providers. It's a very different story than it was three years ago, when our inspections were really limited to more random inspections.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we know there's a problem, and we are working on it. You may be interested in the, okay, thank you, the Tenant-Landlord Commission. I don't know if you're aware of that. We have a commission, the Tenant-Landlord Commission, that works on these, and they're always looking for members, and you certainly can attend meetings. I'm sorry, Ms. Coffey.
Yeah. I believe Mr. Shun's comments were also not just about committed affordable housing, but older market rate buildings that many of us live in that are not subject to the general inspections that CAFS are. And that's something that I have a particular interest in, and I've been talking with the Tenant-Landlord Commission specifically about developing materials and resources that would help people understand what their rights are and who to contact. Anyone can contact our code enforcement if you are having an issue in your building, but I think that's a really lesser-known fact. And not, not only that you can contact them, but how you would contact them and how you would set that up. So that is something that I am actively working on, of how can we get these resources not just for our committed affordable, but for all renters across the county.
Thank you. And Ms. Coffey has also put it on a number of areas. We actually often have resources for people, but they don't know about them. And we need to do a much better job of getting information out about what the resources are. We're aware of that, too. Let's see. Mr. Rifkin came in and talking, thank you, about the resolution, which we've addressed. Ms. Hakura, also unfair housing. And there is also, with this particular resolution, I'm not familiar with it, there is the Civil Rights Commission, which actually works at housing as well. So we do have a commission that works on particularly housing issues here. And I think we all are absolutely against any kind of hate crimes and hate speech, as we have discussed earlier. Yatsani came in, Washington Lee student. And is he still here? Are you still here, Ms. Yatsani? Yeah, hi. I wasn't totally clear about what your concerns were. And Kevin Conley here is going to be in room 311, right outside these doors. There's a room right there, and he can talk to you more in depth and see if there's something we can do to help, okay? Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Audrey Clement came and talked about-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Am I interrupting on that one? Mr. Conley will be helpful, I believe. And I think the issue, if I heard it correctly, was the adult basketball leagues are not allowing kids under 18, even though you're the size and shape of an adult at this point, right? So you don't want to hurt the little kids. I think the other thing, perhaps you and Mr. Conley can speak to, is some of the increased offerings for DPR, our parks and recreation. At several of our recreation centers, we are working to get more team-specific hours, and basketball is one of those offerings. So you may be able to also help shape that if we're not able to move the league insurance requirements that may be underneath their challenge. So thank you so much for coming and for your leadership.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for adding that. We are going to be putting a lot more resources into youth programming as well with our budget in just a little bit. Ms. Clement came and spoke about her experiences with public transportation and concerned about public safety. I'm not sure, she talked about defunding the police. We have not defunded our police at all. And we're actually adding, adding some more money in, in our, in our budget for public safety. And we work with our police quite a bit to make sure that they have training in crisis intervention, to make sure that people who are actually in mental health crisis don't get mixed up in the criminal justice system. So we do do quite a bit along their, along those lines. And then finally, Randall Ham came and talked about the police auditor and that the auditor should be entitled to the full scope, getting the full scope of information that she's legally entitled to. She does. And I don't know if we want to go more into depth, but we've been working very hard with this. I don't know if he's still here. There you are. Yeah. We have been looking, working very hard and at everything that the Virginia code does allow. There sometimes are legal disagreements between lawyers. But I real, I understand in the last disagreement, both our own attorney and her own attorney agreed that Virginia code did not allow it. So perhaps we want to talk a little bit more offline. Thank you. Any more comments here? Yes, Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Hume, I think. And I think you're referring to an article from several weeks ago. And I think I would really benefit from a conversation. I've not been a prosecutor, but I think I'd benefit from a conversation just to, to learn more your perspectives and to really talk through details such as we're able to talk through within appropriate bounds. So I'll look for your email and see, now that budget is done, if we can have a virtual conversation or a coffee, whatever fits best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
Yeah, and I would just add on that topic, that Virginia law is currently overly restrictive on, on this issue. And I think we've all, we're all working through the tension of that, of what is allowed by Virginia law. So again, as you guys pick up the conversation, maybe talking about how can our state delegates support, and how can your lobbying efforts move some of the Virginia law to allow some things that we wish we could do, but we've not been able to under that law.
Thank you both for elaborating. Any more comments? Mr. Karen Tonas?
I think Mr. DiFranti and Ms. Cunningham have covered most of what I wanted to say. One additional thing, we have a body here, which is the Community Oversight Board. The legal construction of that is a work in progress because of the reasons Ms. Cunningham just, just mentioned. But we would benefit from, from your insight and experience with how inspector generals have been able to operate and what were the obstacles for them being effective. It is a different framework. It's not just the inspector, but it's the community oversight board that needs to be strengthened. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you again, all for coming in and all for your caring. We're about to move to our consent agenda, and then we have one item on, on housing. And then we will get to our budget. At the beginning of the budget presentation, I believe we will have a presentation of what we are doing in various areas, many of which you have discussed today. There'll be some slides on that and what we're doing now and currently in the budget and what's going to be added. You may be interested in that. You may not want to stay for the whole meeting, as exciting as I'm sure it's going to be. But you can watch later if you'd like online and check that out, because I think we are addressing many of the, of the issues that, that concern you. We're your representatives, and we're trying hard. Thank you so very much. So if you'd like to stay, you're welcome. But at the moment, colleagues, I think we should move to our consent agenda. Ms. Jacobs, have any items been pulled? I believe there's one that has been pulled.
I am not aware of-
Oh, it's a deferral. It's a deferral. That's all right. Yep, it's a deferral. All right. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda item, agenda, please?
So moved.
All right. Moved and seconded. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. Now, the consent agenda is something that we pass very easily. But just because we pass it that quickly doesn't mean there's some important things there. And so I would like to just go over a couple of highlights of what we just voted on for people's information. And I think we have some slides to put up. The first one I wanted to talk about was our item 11, which is an ordinance decreasing speed limits. And this amends our county code to decrease the speed limits from 30 to 25 miles an hour in these following areas that are listed here. For background, the Department of Environmental Services conducted, as they're required to do, traffic engineering studies in 12 quarters and recommended these five at the moment for warranted decreases. And the, the speed limits are available for the public to review on our agenda and meeting webpage, if you want to see how they, how the study went. I also want to acknowledge the concern of some residents that we're very well aware of regarding the southern portion of Carlin Springs Road. The northern portion is here, which is not, which is not included in this item. We do hear you, and the board decided we'll be adding additional speed cameras to the budget, and we will be, that we will be able to deploy on Carlin Springs Road. And I think that will start to address that, and we will be voting on that in the budget in just a little while. Item 12, we also, was roof replacement at the county's Equipment Bureau building. And that is going to include skylights, slashing, and structural supports to accommodate future solar panels from your energy-efficient building envelope. Personally, I think all of us, we would like to have solar panels on all our buildings. We're working on it. Also, item 16, this is construction of the Arlington Junction Park and South Ead Street, complete streets, phase one improvements. The community may know these spaces as the Teardrop Parcel. It's located at 1051 South Ead Street, between the future Penn Place site and the Alter Apartments Building. It's been used actually for construction, laydown and things, but it's now finally going to become a park. It will provide access to green spaces, park amenities, and other natural elements for nearby residents, neighbors, and of course, visitors. And it will also include installing permanent physical barriers for protected bike lanes, sidewalk, and cross-swalk improvements. So this is a nice improvement for the National Landing area. We also approved with item 23, Marcus Alert. We accepted, always nice to accept money, $478,286 in bipartisan Safer Communities Act federal funds, which will expand the county's mobile outreach support team and initiate a Marcus Alert program, which will begin July 1st of this year. And this program is a collaboration between 911, the Regional Crisis Call Center, which is 988, our local first responders, and our regional mobile crisis response teams. And it's to help ensure that any behavioral health crisis-related call receives a behavioral health-focused response, which is much more appropriate. Finally, we did a number of, authorized a number of advertisements for future hearings and, and votes on the five items. I will cover a few of them here. Item 28 here, this was, would amend sections of the Arlington County zoning ordinance, revising regulations to approve signs of various types in commercial mixed-use districts. It will be heard by the Planning Commission no earlier than September 4, and the County Board no earlier than September 14. Item 29, this would amend the county zoning ordinance to allow newer amended processes for more streamlined and economically viable approach to the adaptive reuse of obsolete commercial buildings. And this will be heard by the Planning Commission no earlier than September 4, and by the County Board no sooner than September 14. This will allow us to adapt to changing economic circumstances. Item 30, it would enable the County Board to approve additional building density above its maximum threshold. And for existing buildings, an approved unbuilt site plan of developments in the CO Roslin Zoning District, and this will be heard by the Planning Commission no earlier than July 8, and the County Board no earlier than July 20. Item 31, the taxicab ordinance. This would eliminate the annual taxicab certification fee, which is currently 150 per vehicle, and it will be heard by the County Board May 18. And then finally, item 32 would amend Chapter 20 of the county code to align with state law, which helps taking, taking down barriers that have emerged to our solar exemption process. And this tax exemption for various solar equipment, facilities, and devices will be heard by the County Board May 18. And those are the more interesting items in the consent agenda, which we just adopted. And I think that brings us now to our first regular hearing item. Madam Clark, would you please call the first item?
Item number 34 is a site plan amendment to modify conditions and to revise building and site elements for Crystal House III located at 1900 South Ead Street.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With me this morning are Emma Martin and Jane Kim. I'm going to turn it over to Emma to make the staff present, oh, Anthony Fusarelli has arrived. I'll turn it over to Emma to make the staff presentation.
Great. Mr. Fusarelli.
And Ms. Ask, thank you. Go ahead. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm Emma Martin with Arlington County's Planning Division. I'll be presenting the Crystal House III minor site plan amendment item. The site's located at 1900 South Ead Street in the Crystal Houses Development, which was approved with Site Plan 451 in 2019. The site zones CO Crystal City with a medium residential general land use plan designation. The 2019 approved buildings were generally consistent with locations provided for in the Crystal City Sector Plan's illustrative plan. The 2019 approval is also generally consistent with the Sector Plan's recommendation for building height, form, and design, providing a careful and deliberate taper in height and scale westward towards the existing single-family neighborhoods in Aurora Highlands. In addition, the applicant is providing more public park space than is recommended by the Sector Plan. The approved new buildings were designed to address scale and walkability and are an improvement over the existing conditions at the site. The site plan amendment is specific to Crystal House III, which is highlighted in yellow on the slide. In 2019, the County Board approved the Crystal Houses Site Plan Amendment with the majority of the units being market rate. Under the new ownership and agreements between the property owner, master developer, and Arlington County, the site plan amendment would provide new opportunities to deliver previously approved site plan project with the majority of the units for low and moderate income residents, which is a significant advancement of the Crystal City Sector Plan's goals for increasing the inventory of affordable housing units in the sector. Crystal House III is intended to be the first infill building to be developed in the Crystal Houses Development, and Arlington Partnership for Affordable Housing, otherwise known as APA, will construct and operate this building. Due to an advertising issue, no action was taken on this item at the March 12, 2024 County Board meeting. The 2019 approval included 819 new residential units and four new multifamily residential buildings, and 36 of townhouse-style multifamily units, in addition to the retention of two existing buildings with 828 units. In addition to standard site plan mitigations, the applicant implemented Sector Plan recommendations by providing two new public parks on-site, a public tree-lined pedestrian pathway through the block, and constructing a protected bike lane on the South Ead Street frontage of the block. The 2019 approval for 97.17 units per acre with 427 units of additional density above the base was achieved via the Parks and Protected Bike Lane, LEED Gold Certification for the new buildings, and affordable housing contribution, as well as other streetscape and utility improvements. As amended in October 2023, the site plan is now approved for 98.17 units per acre, which was achieved by the commitment of affordable housing for Crystal House VI. The parking ratio is currently 0.69 spaces per unit, which is, and the site's located in a transient-rich location near the Crystal City metro station. This slide summarizes the changes that are proposed with this minor amendment. The applicant's requesting changes to the site and building, as well as revisions to condition language, in order to change the development from a market-rate condominium building to an affordable housing development. And I'll go into these in the following slides. On this slide are the zoning ordinance criteria for what differentiates a major site plan amendment from a minor site plan amendment. The first criteria for a major amendment is when the principal use changes in more than 5% of the floor area of the building. And here, there is no change in the principal use with this proposed amendment. The second criteria is that the density, which is measured in units per acre in the CO Crystal City zoning district, would need to change by more than 5%. The applicant's proposing to keep the same number of units with this amendment, therefore, there is no change in the site's density.[1756.26] of units with this amendment, therefore, there is no change in the site's density. The third criteria is a building height change of more than 12 feet. With this amendment, the applicant is proposing an increase of less than one inch. The fourth criteria is a change in the gross floor area of the first floor by more than 20%. With this amendment, there's a 12.3% decrease proposed. The fifth criteria is a change in the site area, and there's no change in the site's area. And in summary, none of the criteria that require a major site plan amendment were met with this application. Therefore, this is considered a minor site plan amendment. The applicant's proposing revised interior layouts and composition of units, as floor plans have changed since the building was originally designed as a market rate building with different floor plan requirements and unit sizes than for affordable housing. The applicant's redesigned the parking garage and landscaped courtyard with a fully enclosed plaza level parking and underground parking, as well as a second level terrace above. The applicant's proposing a reduction of 30 parking spaces for a proposed ratio of 0.65 for the site, which is consistent with the residential parking guidelines that would support the applicant providing as little as 0.21 spaces per unit for an affordable housing development, given the site's location one block from the Crystal City Metro Station. This is the approved ground floor plan shown on the left, with the proposed ground floor plan shown on the right. You can see the changes to the garage. While the building's gotten a bit taller along the South Ead Street frontage and larger to accommodate more family size affordable units, the density for the site has not changed. The absolute height of the building has also not changed significantly. Proposed revisions to the approved facade include changing the color of the materials to include more colors of brick and metal panel, and to incorporate fiber cement and aluminum railings. The applicant states that these materials were selected for their durability, amount of required maintenance, energy efficiency, as well as to best position the project in competing for low income housing tax credits based on material standards administered by Virginia Housing. The applicant's proposing to remove the tenant only through building passage, and at the time of approval in 2019, staff did not support creating a public access point through the break in the Crystal House 3 building, as this area was not identified as suitable for heavy pedestrian traffic. Since the 2019 approval, the sites come under divided ownership, and the applicant believes that providing access to tenants of the building controlled by two different owners poses managerial challenges and safety concerns. Instead, the the project proposes public realm improvements in other walkways through the site, which will provide more direct connections through the neighborhood. 800 square feet of retail at the corner of South Ead Street and 18th Street is proposed to be used for retail equivalent use for a lobby and conference space for tenants. This is currently permitted via an administrative change, given the existing conditions, though the applicant's proposing to remove the requirement for administrative approval. The applicant's proposing to remove the rooftop pool that was included in the 2019 approval, and has proposed potentially locating solar panels and a green roof area on the rooftop. Instead of the rooftop pool, the applicant's proposed the second floor amenity terrace as an extension of the indoor amenities that are adjacent to the courtyard, which creates a cohesive recreational space for residents. The approved facade of Crystal House 3 is shown on the top of the slide, with the corner of 20th Street and and South Ead Street shown on the left, and the corner of 18th Street and South Eads on the right. The proposed perspective renderings are shown on the bottom of the slide. The applicant proposes to amend the multi-phase building plan and public park easement conditions, and to add a new condition regarding utility relocation work to clarify that specified permits will be issued after the applicant meets the requirements of each condition in a manner related to proposed construction sequencing of the building. The applicant's proposing earthcraft gold certification instead of LEED, which staff supports, as earthcraft gold encompasses sustainable design criteria more appropriate for multifamily affordable housing developments. The applicant proposes to amend conditions to permit offsite parking during construction to serve residents of the existing Crystal House 1 and 2 buildings. The proposed infill development across the site will be constructed in existing surface parking lots, and replacement parking for those spaces will be provided in garages constructed with each new building. This means that during construction, there will be times when entire surface parking lots are under excavation or are being used for construction staging when new garages have yet to be delivered to serve existing residents. During this time, the applicant proposes to secure offsite parking nearby with administrative approval, subject to the requirements of the proposed conditions in the staff report. The applicant's proposing to eliminate the offsite bicycle infrastructure condition requiring completion of an offsite protected bicycle lane on the west side of South Ead Street from 15th Street South to 18th Street South, which is on the block north of the site. This the applicant does not propose any revisions to the requirement to complete the protected bicycle lane along the subject block's frontage on South Ead Street between 18th Street South and 22nd Street South. Staff is supportive of the elimination of this commitment with the Crystal Houses Development. As a duplicative commitment to provide this protected bicycle lane is also required to be constructed in the same area as a part of the Crystal Towers Site Plan, which is Site Plan 13, Condition 57, to be exact. In lieu of constructing the offsite bicycle lane, the applicant's agreed to provide an additional 22 units within the Crystal House 3 building as committed affordable units. While the condition language specifies that 22 units are being provided as committed affordable units, the applicant's committed through the terms of the agreements among the involved parties to ensure that at least 75% of all units on the block would be affordable. The subject property is located within the Aurora Highlands Civic Association and is adjacent to the Crystal City and Arlington Ridge Civic Associations, further the sites within the National Landing Business Improvement District. The proposed site plan amendment application does not meet the zoning ordinance criteria for what constitutes a major site plan amendment, and therefore does not require review by the Planning Commission or its Site Plan Review Committee, abbreviated SPRC. However, given the specific proposed building and site changes, and the known community interest in the project, staff hosted two virtual public meetings on January 16 and February 12, 2024, and we invited civic associations, surrounding residents, and members of the 2018-2019 Crystal Houses Site Plan SPRC roster, as well as liaisons of the Planning Commission, Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and Housing Commission, to engage in public discussions with the applicant and staff about the proposed site plan amendment. Attendees at the meetings expressed concerns about building design, facade changes, parking, pedestrian access, retail equivalent space, the public review process, and transportation impacts. These concerns were also reflected in letters provided to staff from the Aurora Highlands Civic Association, in addition to removal of the rooftop pool, occupiable balconies, and the through building passage. The Crystal City Civic Association stated that the proposal is significantly better than the original proposal that was submitted in November of 2023, but they had concerns about the minor site plan review process and the private nature of the second floor terrace. The national business, the National Landing Business Improvement District provided a letter of support for the project, and the Arlington Ridge Civic Association did not respond to staff's requests or comments. Both staff and the community provided input to the applicant during their review process that informed iterative revisions of the building's design that progressed the overall design of the project. Staff finds that collectively, these revisions have refined the project design compared with the initial submission. The subject site plan amendment is generally consistent with the intent of the Crystal Houses Site Plan approved in 2019, as the changes are requested to accommodate a change in design of the building from market rate residential units to affordable housing. The proposal is also consistent with the Crystal City Sector Plan's goals, and furthers the achievement of the goal of increasing the supply of committed affordable units in the sector. The proposed parking ratio of 0.5 spaces per unit is consistent with the residential parking guidelines, and the use of retail equivalents at the corner of South Ead Street and 18th Street is consistent with the Arlington County Retail Plan. Finally, the proposal is not anticipated to have any undue adverse impacts on the community. Therefore, staff recommends that the county board approve the minor site plan amendment with condition revisions as proposed in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. We probably will have some questions in a little while. I think the applicant, I suspect, has a presentation.
Yeah, we've been sitting.
Okay.
Ms. Excuse me? Yes, we 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 have a very short presentation.
That's fine.
Because I think Emma went into
Thank you.
most of the pertinent details. My name is Carmen Romero, and I'm the president and CEO at APA. And I just want to first off, say thank you to the county for allowing us to move forward what I think is a really bold project. APA is home to over 5,000 Arlingtonians tonight across the county, but nowhere right now in Crystal City. So this is an area of opportunity for us to make sure that we have affordable housing in every area of Arlington County. We're focused, obviously, on the 30 to 60% AMI families that live in Arlington. Our average household income is $39,000 a year for a household to remain stably housed in this county. We are deeply committed to resident services and ensuring that even after they've moved in, out of our 53 employees, 11 are on the real estate side, but 21 are on the resident services side, to ensure that really this partnership goes far beyond the real estate. Our kind of vision for for our work is everyone deserves a place to call home, a foundation to live our dreams. We talked earlier during this hearing about we at APA believe that housing is a human right, and we are working pretty hard to make that a reality here in Arlington. And this is our largest endeavor yet in the county. And to do that, we are very appreciative of the collaboration that we have with your planning staff, your housing staff. The manager's office is a really complicated site, and appreciate you're going to be seeing a lot of us to to bring all of these units to fruition. I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Real Estate, Haley Norris, who also, like me, lives and works in Arlington, and then later to Danny Ross, our project manager, who also lives and works in Arlington. Haley?
Sorry. Good morning. Haley Norris with APA. And we wanted to start out by sharing an overview of the Crystal House infill redevelopment to really put Crystal House 3 into context. In late 2022, APA and EYA were selected as the master developers of this infill redevelopment through a competitive RFP process that the county issued. The site was fully entitled in 2019 through the 4.1 amendment process prior to the RFP, and our proposal largely adheres to that initial approval from 2019. Some of the highlights of the master plan overview that APA and EYA will be providing at full build out, you can see here on the on the image, the site is going to have approximately 844 new units, at least 655 of which will be affordable between 30% to 80% of the area median income. The site will be mixed income and mixed tenancy, so there will be rental and homeownership opportunities. We'll also be delivering two public parks, along with other community benefits, including the bike lane you heard about, and other upgrades to the site overall. As far as overall site schedule, Crystal House 3 is going to be the first phase, so we expect to break ground on that next year, and it'll complete in 2027. Other phases will follow after that through approximately 2030 to build out the entire site plan. Crystal House 3 will have 432 units that are affordable between 30% and 80% of the area median income. We're really excited here to be delivering more than 100 units that are either at 30% or at 50% of the area median income, and that we've been able to add 63 bedrooms to the building. The original approval didn't offer any three bedrooms, so we're really thrilled to be offering those to families here. The building will have some of the amenities that are listed here, community rooms, fitness room, business center, a space for telehealth. There will be some play spaces for kids, both indoors and outdoors, that will be really close to our courtyard that residents will be able to use, that'll have grills, you know, areas for seating, areas for play, and of course, the park that we'll be delivering shortly after the building's completed. The building's also going to have 22 units that are set aside for residents of Arlington County's permanent supportive housing program. So along with those units and the services, we're also going to have some space in the building that county DHS staff will be able to use to serve both the PSH residents here and in the future phase of Crystal House 6. So with that, I'm going to hand off to my colleague Danny Ross to share a little bit more about some of the design process. We worked really hard with county staff on this.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Danny Ross, Project Manager with APA. I'm grateful to join you all remotely so that I can attend a wedding this weekend in Tennessee. As we've mentioned, and staff gave a great presentation as well, updating, you know, the interior units to incorporate floor plans that are more suitable to families, you know, obviously will have implications to the building's facade and massing. As we worked with staff and community members on these updates to the building overall, we we continue to make improvements in the in the massing and the articulation, adding more brick, making sure we focused on the pedestrian experience. And also, we've been working very closely with our resident services team to really incorporate services that engage our residents and and meaningful spaces throughout the building. And so what what you see here is the latest and greatest rendering, sort of incorporating all of that work over the past five months. We're looking here at this image at the corner that would be 20th and Eads across the street from what will be the new park and the facade as you move along Eads. And and part of the design updates also adds this, what we call an undulating wave, to help break down the massing and add some some building intrigue to the architecture overall. And again, focusing on that pedestrian experience, we've really enhanced the glazing with two-story lobby elements at both corners, and those are tied to key amenity spaces and well-connected throughout the building. Looking at this, zooming in on Ead Street, we've reintroduced the stoops. These are private residential stoops, which allow access, direct access into units, which is a great addition along this stretch to further enhance that that pedestrian connectivity and experience. And again, we worked very closely with staff and, you know, I feel, Emma, thank you so much. You did a great job presenting. I don't want to belabor some of the points. So with that, I'll turn it back. But myself, Danny Ross, and Haley Norris are also available via email, or you can call us anytime if there's additional questions that don't get answered today.
Okay, thank you. And anything more on your presentation? All right.
No, that's up to you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Do we have, I don't think we have any commission presentations.
We do not.
We do not. Okay. Speakers, do we have some speakers?
We do not have any speakers.
We do not have any speakers. All right. Then the conversation is with the board. Colleagues, questions for our staff or for the applicant? Ms. Cunningham, I see you're late first. Go.
Would you like a motion to begin?
You know, that might be a really good idea.
Terrific. I thought you might. So I move to adopt the attached ordinance to approve the site plan amendment to revise building and site elements for Crystal House 3, which is part of the Crystal Houses Site Plan SP number 451, subject to all previously approved and amended conditions of the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Motion's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Now, questions? Comments? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. I'm just so excited about this project. It is the first time since the 70s, I believe, that we will be building affordable housing in the Crystal City neighborhood, and it is long, long overdue. I should say committed affordable housing. And it's particularly a delight for me because I finally figured out that my very first sublease in Arlington was at Crystal House, and it was, I think, inside the footprint of where this building will go. So I'm with you, Danny. So that's kind of exciting. And it truly was a market rate affordable sublease of sharing a bedroom while doing a public policy internship in the last century. So the other highlights I want to share, we have had incredible partnership from our community leaders throughout the National Landing area for a very long time. They've been sort of at ground central, ground zero of major rapid development. And I want to thank them and also highlight the incredible collaboration that they have led since the livability 22202 work, which really brought together not just three civic associations, but really worked to shake the trees and get renters and others to participate, and is a model for our engagement across the county. I know that they have had several concerns and met with them as recently as last week. And I know, you know, the the main one that was persisting is the question of minor versus major site plan. We've gone over that. I think staff shared that in the presentation. And we will continue to to make sure that we're following those rules very specifically the same way on every project, which I am convinced we have here, and will continue to ask that we do in future projects. What else did I want to share? Finally, we did hear from commissions last time, though we weren't able to vote because of the advertising issue. And I believe this may be the highest scoring C2E2 evaluation, which is is no small prize. We mean to get higher than that over time, but the the earthcraft gold, the future solar, and just the real strong commitment to making all of that balance within an incredibly difficult financing package as well. I want to thank you for that. And finally, I do want to give a nod to the question of mixed income versus all committed. And I think while our, I would like to encourage our housing partners and our staff to continue to push for true mixed income within the same buildings, it is really hard because the financing packages are so complicated. Your peers at AHC did this in the Westerly in in the district, where about a third of the building is is affordable. It was a lot of paper, a lot of financing to get that through. But I just want to encourage us to continue to do that. On this site, you know, we actually, it is very mixed use because, mixed income, because we have multiple buildings coming online, so it will feel mixed in the courtyards and in the neighborhood. But just want to tag that, I think that is a community interest as well. And one last thing, forgot to mention, the three bedrooms are amazing. So I think you mentioned that we've added 60 additional bedrooms. While we always measure by units, bedrooms might be the better measurement because it's always, there's a real big difference between a studio and a three bedroom unit, both in how incredibly difficult they are to finance. So thank you for that. And I want to also thank staff, who will share in our budget later that we will be adding additional funds to support additional 30% AMI, most likely in this project. So. in this project, so I'll wrap there.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is an awesome coincidence that one of your first in Crystal City, but it's wonderful, and sometimes life works out that way. I want to say thank you to Ms. Martin and Ms. Kim. I want to thank Ms. Romero and the APA team for engaging with those two events. There are always ways to enroll in the collective work together, and then there are ways to enroll less, and you clearly have enrolled and really appreciate that with respect to the minor site plan. And I guess I would just say, each project is different. We were lucky, many of us and Madam Chair offered remarks at the Unity event near Central United Methodist Church. Not out of disrespect, but out of childcare duties, I had to slide out of that event early. But I can say, and so we would evaluate each project differently, but when you see a project like that, and I know when we see this project, starting in Crystal City as the first since the '70s, it's immensely fulfilling. And to think of the lives that are homes and foundations for people to live the American dream is just, it's an honor to get to participate and hope to look at other projects on their own merits, but also just thrilled to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coffey?
Thank you. I am also thrilled to support this, and I think to Ms. Cunningham's point about, you know, mixed income, one of the things we can't control is how difficult it is to finance truly mixed income buildings, but one of the things we can control is the geographic dispersion of our projects. And I think this is a really good example of where we're not just packing in more affordable housing, where we're already building affordable housing, but it's, you know, Crystal City sector has developed so much with a lot of market rate, luxury, the whole array, and now we're also adding in affordable housing, which means that we are getting the community interaction, the true inclusiveness that I think we want to champion, and so I'm really excited about that. As Mr. DiFranti mentioned, we did tour the brand-new opening project in Ballston, and one of the things that came up in this presentation is one of the changes for construction materials. And I think one of the things that came up on my tour was the importance of using really durable, good-quality construction materials because these buildings need longevity. And I think, you know, I really want to highlight how important it is that we do meet those standards, because I think oftentimes there's a perception that committed affordable housing, you know, we could lower our standards because we're getting affordable housing, but that's not fair to the residents and the people who live there. They deserve to live in a building that is just as nice as any luxury building. I think that that, you know, to our speakers earlier talking about housing as a human right, we should not be lowering our standards just to get affordability, and so I really applaud the changes that we're making and the improvements and the three bedrooms. I think this is going to be an excellent project, though I do want to recognize it's part of, you know, continual construction pain and challenges for the Crystal City sector, and, you know, I think we've put them through a lot, but I think we're getting a lot out of it in exchange, and so thank you to our staff on all of the work on this. I know that it is no small feat to get it done, but I'm really, I'm really excited. I think there's so much good here and hearing about the preparation for rooftop solar potentially and the green roof, and we're really integrating so many different community priorities within this project, and I think that's what good planning and good land use is about.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Almost everything is being said, not everybody said that, so of course, it's an amazing project. One thing that I want to highlight is how much work has been behind that in this super block and how much work is in front of us. And the most important thing, Ms. Cunningham is absolutely right, this is the first time since the '70s that we do a committed affordable there, and it used to be a place that didn't need it so much because it had a very good residential-commercial mix, that was a place that was, the market was delivering workforce housing, et cetera, and then the market went away and didn't deliver anymore. So one of the most important, for me, merits of the project and the entire concept there is that it delivers mixed income in location-efficient ways. So we have an amazing need for workforce housing there, the adjacent buildings, the existing buildings are a testament to that, they are also mostly 80% AMI. So and therefore, I think that not only is that the right type of project, not only it's adding to our committed affordable housing stock, big time in this case, but it's also extremely location-efficient. The people who will be living there, there is a very big chance that they will literally working, walking distance from there. And if not, this is the best transit-oriented, connected sector in Arlington County, period. And so this is the kind of project we always wanted to have and always wanted to be supportive of. If there is something, I have to comment to you also on a couple of other things. I was extremely pleased to see that the initial kind of urbanist design problem of the project that creates this very narrow corridor between the legacy building and the new building, this was opened. Now there is more park space there, there's more distance there, this will be way more livable than it was initially, you know, designed for. I noticed that you took the mass, the building mass from these two pieces at the corner and, you know, and you moved them to the 18th Street corner. I think this was brilliant, it should have happened from the very beginning. Thank you for that, so I will be pleased to support that.
All right. I don't think there's anything much left to say except thank you. I will note that I've been doing this for 12 years now, and when I first got on, I mean, every, it felt like every project that came to us was an argument, and it was because of sometimes the applicants and the board and the public and our staff, it was just, it didn't feel always very good, went on forever. And now, oh my gosh, high rating from E2C2, that's just pretty amazing, great staff work, no comment, commission's not here, everybody's just thinking it's great. It feels easy, and that's because of all the hard work. Okay, well, maybe, this is true, I'm on my way, I'm trying not to jinx it for you. No, I think we're on a roll, actually, is where I was sort of heading. It just feels like, I mean, that Unity event, at Unity Homes was great, and it just really feels like we're much more on a roll. I think the community is starting to, is working together well with us, and yes, thank you for the shout-out to the community, because they put up with so much for so long, and they still have a lot to go. But they do see the light at the end of the tunnel, and they realize this is going to benefit themselves and everybody. And then we've got, you know, staff really working well, you all really to go back and forth and back and forth, which does make it better, working with the commission. So good work to everybody, and the reward is that we don't spend a whole lot of time talking about it here, except to say thank you. So thank you very much. And with that, I think I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, all right, I think we've got a 5-0 vote. Congratulations, thank you so very much, really, really appreciate it. All right. Colleagues, we have one more little item, the budget. Thank you all. And after, my notes say many work sessions, we could count them, it was a lot, two public hearings, all kinds of behind-the-scenes work, often into the wee hours of the morning. On weekends, I think Mr. Stevenson's gone through a whole container of tang, we've really been putting in a whole lot of work, and here we are. And I will start off asking the manager to make a brief presentation, sort of summing up a bit where he started us and kind of where we've ended up, and going by various issue areas, as I mentioned earlier on in this meeting, that we would be doing, and that would start us off. So, Mr. Schwartz, would you mind starting off? Thank you. And I haven't seen his slide presentation yet, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we have about six or seven slides. I'd like to state very clearly to everyone, this does not summarize everything that's in the budget, and I know board members are going to speak to it, and it's based on the markup that took place on Tuesday. You have not yet voted on the budget, so it's subject to change. But I thought it was important to give everybody a summary of where we ended up, because we spent a lot of time of talking about how I proposed a budget in February, and then the board spends a lot of time talking about what you want to add to it or take away from it, and then sometimes we miss the bigger picture. So with that, let's start at the place where I know a lot of people like to focus, which is on our tax rate. You can see if the board moves ahead with what you were discussing on Tuesday evening, you can see the tax rate there at $1.03, and you can see how that compares with our regional partners. Also, if you note, the very up above, the adopted budget of $1.65 billion is a little bit over a 6.3% increase over the fiscal '24 budget, which is at $1.55 billion. And here, we have a summary of what happens if the proposed two-cent tax rate increase is adopted. You can see on the bottom line, we've summarized what is a mythical average taxpayer in the county, and the additional burden for that household would be $541. We've also, in the little box on the right there, talked about what would change for the average apartment dweller, renter. So let's go on to the next slide. So I chose to start with workforce investment. I know this is one of the, this is something that I'm focused on a lot, I know the board spent a lot of time talking about it. We had in the proposed budget, and the board is hopefully going to reaffirm, a 4.75% raise for our general employees and also for the sheriff, some one-time bonuses for our public safety staff and some staff who work for the Department of Human Services, and very excited about increasing the family leave benefit from 10 weeks to 16 weeks. This was not in my original budget, appreciate the board putting in the ongoing funding for that, and that is something that will be greatly welcome. Reaffirming what was in the collective bargaining agreements with our three bargaining units. And then also, one of the items you have today is the pay plan, which is meant to reduce several hundred pay classifications down to around 40, and we are looking forward to being able to implement that. We also spent a lot of time talking about recruiting people, and some of the stresses that you've heard about our workforce, specifically in public safety, are trying to get staff on board. So the board took the step of authorizing bonuses for our frontline behavioral health staff, as well as our uniform staff and fire, police, and sheriff. And then also, something that I'm specifically excited about, there is a provision in federal law that was enacted two years ago that will allow us to provide a student loan supplement of $5,250 to any new hires that come in. Essentially, that supplement will be for new employees who have student loan debt, and they will receive that tax-free. And so that is something that I hope that distinguishes us in the job market, and we look forward to being able to implement that over the next year. Let's go to the next slide. Okay. I know that we've spent a lot of time talking about, and the board has spent a lot of time talking about, what we would do for our teens in the community. And the summary line here at the top, I think, is very important. $4.3 million across fiscal '24, which the board, that includes the one-time funding from fiscal '24, and also fiscal '25 funding. You can see that in the proposed budget, we had $700,000 of ongoing and $500,000 of one-time. Following in the bullets below are the items that the board has added during budget consideration, and you can see, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going into depth on each of them because I think the board will want to talk about it, but our after-school programs, one-time funding of $1.5 million, expansion of youth programming, close to $500,000, the youth programming manager, which is going to be critical to moving ahead with all the moving pieces we have among our parks programs and working with schools. And then we're really excited about the investments in Arlington Mill and also Central and Westover Libraries that will create spaces for our teens. And you can see in the box on the right there, that what was informing that was trying to balance a series of priorities and piloting some programs. So we're all very excited about that. Housing. So I know we spent a lot of time talking about housing and, you know, $113 million investment in housing in a, you know, $1.6 billion budget is really a considerable investment. And the one thing that even doesn't come out here on the slides, the one thing that I really am very excited about here, especially in eviction prevention and housing grants, we are now almost all ongoing funding. And that is actually important for us, because we have, over the last, especially when the pandemic came, we were relying a lot on one-time funding to make some of these programs work, especially like in eviction prevention. You can see 3.3 million of the 4.3 million is ongoing, whereas the last year, it was sort of flipped almost exactly the other way around, the split between one-time and ongoing. And that $4.3 million for eviction prevention does not include the fact that we now have two additional staff. This work doesn't get done by itself, and we are very excited to have two full-time committed employees, that's another quarter of a million dollars in funding, to work in those programs. We're also very excited about the ability to continue to pay down the debt that we have at Barcroft, and we'll be doing that in this fiscal year with funds that we identified in the proposed budget. And again, housing grants, transitioning to all ongoing funding. And I know the board's going to want to talk about the new pilot program we're having, and also, we're excited about having additional staff to work there. And usually, what has been a big subject of conversation is our Affordable Housing Investment Fund, and you can see there that, I know we often get asked, can we do more? And this is a record year for that, so it's $21.5 million. And I don't mean to ignore what happened with permanent supportive housing, which is a critical program, and also our housing choice vouchers, but we're really excited about being able to move ahead with that if the board makes final, takes final action on that. Let's go to the next slide. Environment. Okay, so the board has, through a series of actions, proposed $3.5 million in additional funding, and you can see what some of those things are that the funding would focus on. We continue to move to electrify our fleet, and you can see with the addition of 23 electric vehicles, we will have 61% of our non-public safety fleet, sedans, will be electric. There's something that I included in the proposed budget, and I just want to say thank you very much for the conversation we had about this, adding $900,000 towards tree pruning, and I know the board's added some additional funding there for our tree program, and continue our work on invasives and the Tree Canopy Fund. And I know an issue that has gotten a lot of attention, and we are happy to be able to add back staff at our nature center hours, and that, I know board members will talk about it, it's not just simply hiring some staff who are going to sit in the nature centers, it's also going to be part of an expansive effort to try to work and have our nature center staff and our programming really work closely with our schools and how that work is done. And so I'm sure you'll want to spend more time talking about this, but we'll just move on to the next slide. Some small items, but nevertheless, really important. Right now, our balance for land acquisition is at zero, so I appreciate the board adding in some funds of $1.5 million for that. Also, we've set aside some funding for capital improvements that you, I think, will find to be very useful as we now embark, after today, full-time focus on the capital improvement plan. And then, thank you very much to the board, we had a long conversation about this on Tuesday, adding $5.8 million to our stabilization reserve, which is at 1%, moving that to 1.3%, and that's addition to our core reserves of 5.5%, and this is very welcome. And we will be talking to you also about our financial policies when we propose the CIP, so we can put this in perspective, but this moves us a little bit closer to where we need to be, but we appreciate what's happened here. And because this is my favorite slide, I insisted that it be put here, we are providing additional support to the schools of $640 million. And then you can see with our number-two Dixon Tyconderoga pencil here, that we have a number of items that aren't included in the $640 million, which are support to our schools, whether through our parks programs, libraries, our fleet management, and the work that we do with our public health staff, just to mention a few. Let's go to the next slide, and look down at the very bottom here, and you can see that schools will be receiving, if you move ahead with what you were discussing on Tuesday, a close to $640 million, which is a, over a $32 million increase from what they received last year. And we're very excited about the fact that we're able to continue, this is following the revenue-sharing principles, and I know that, I've spoken with the superintendent, he's very happy about it. Obviously, everybody would love to have more money all the time, but this is a big investment in our schools, and it's our number-one investment, actually, as a county. And we'll go to the next slide, which says, adopted budget summary, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know, you kept saying that you wouldn't talk about something because, you know, the board, I don't know why you're assuming we're going to talk so much, but anyway, thank you very much. All right, we have, the public testimony is closed, we don't have advisory groups, we are... We are right to board discussion. And what I would propose to do is, we'll move through the motions, and each of us has got some motions we'll make. And I think after each one of us makes the motion, we'll get a second, and then we'll have any discussion if there is any. People are welcome to talk to their motion. And if we're all set, I will get us started. I didn't quite realize how much I had assigned to myself to do, but it's mostly reading. And so if you will be patient with me, we will work through it. And our able attorney will let me know if I messed anything up. All right, so I would like to move that we had topped the attached FY 2025 County Budget Resolution, which is Attachment 1 of the Staff Report dated April 16, 2024, that we, too, adopt the attached FY 2025 County Appropriations Resolution, Attachment 2 of the Staff Report dated April 16, 2024, that we, number 3, authorize the county manager to negotiate and sign grant agreements with nonprofits that result from the FY 2025 budget appropriations, subject to approval as to form of those agreements by the county attorney. 4, we authorize the county manager or his designee to accept $1 million from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management grant for critical technology enhancements to the Emergency Operations Center and Situational Awareness and Intelligence Center, that's Attachment 3, to that same April 16 report, and execute grant documents in a form approved by the county attorney. A 5, I move we appropriate $750,000 in FY 2025 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to, there's a number here, I don't think I have to read it to pay go. Thank you. For the critical technology enhancements to the Emergency Operations Center and Situational Awareness and Intelligence Center. A 6, move that we appropriate $2 million in FY 2024 from non-departmental account to the Development Fund. Item 7, I move we appropriate $15 million in additional revenue anticipated in FY 2024 to continue the loan repayment on the Barcroft debt. That moves me to item B, B1. I move we adopt the resolution, Attachment 1 of the Board Report dated April 17, 2024, with calendar year 2024 base real estate tax rate of 1.033 per $100 of assessed value, that's the tax rate. 2, I move we adopt the resolution, Attachment 1 of the Board Report dated April 17, 2024, with a calendar year 2024 commercial real estate tax for transportation initiatives at the current rate of .125 per $100. Item C1, I move we adopt the resolution, Attachment 1 of the Board Report dated April 19, 2024, with the calendar year 2024 general personal property tax rate of $5 per 100 assessed value and a personal property tax rate of 1.033 per 100 of assessed value, which is equal to the real estate tax rate for public service corporations using the attached resolution. And finally, C2, I move we adopt the resolution, Attachment 2 of the Board Report dated April 19, 2024, for calendar year 2024, fixing the methodology that shall be utilized in distributing the state's block grant, including additional relief provided to qualify clean vehicle, clean fuel vehicles of 50% of the tax bill from $3,001 to $20,000 of the value, and additional relief provided to qualifying vehicles equipped to transport the disabled of 50% of the tax bill from $3,001 to $20,000 of value. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. I do not feel the need to talk a whole lot about this. We, we're setting the tax rate with this, which we have discussed quite a bit. It is a little bit more than what the manager had proposed. We had a lot of discussion about it. I think it's the right thing to do to fund what we need to do. And if nobody else has a comment, I'll call on the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much, colleagues. That brings us to items D through F, which I've asked Ms. Coffey to do.
Thank you. I don't have quite as much to read, but...
Which is a good thing.
So I would move that we adopt the calendar year 2024 tax rate for the Ballston Business Improvement Service District, Ballston Bid, of 0.045 per $100 of assessed value that is in addition to the current real estate tax using the resolution as shown in the attachment in the Staff Report. I further move that we adopt the calendar year 2024 tax rate for the National Landing Business Improvement Service District of 0.043 per $100 of assessed value that is in addition to the current real estate tax rate using the resolution shown as Attachment 1 in the Staff Report. And further, I move that we adopt the calendar year 2024 tax rate for the Roslin Business Improvement Service District, or Roslin Bid, of 0.078 per $100 of assessed value that is in addition to the current real estate tax rate using the resolution shown in Attachment 1 of the Staff Report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Coffey, would you like to speak to your motion at all?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, that's fine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Great. Next, items G through I. Mr. Karen Tounas.
So I move the county manager's recommendation to adopt the amendment to Chapter 26, Article I, that's item G. So I move to adopt the amendment to Chapter 26, Article 1 of the Arlington County Code, Unitary Disordinance, Attachment 1, to increase the water and sewer rates and codify a rate for the fire hydrant permits effective July 1, 2024.
Okay, is that all of the, that's G through I?
I will go, so we go all together.
Yep, just keep going. Yep, we're good.
I move the county manager's recommendation, that's a longer one, adopt the amendments to Chapter 10, Article 1, Residential Reviews and Recycling, and Article 5, Commercial Collectors of the Arlington County Code, Attachment 1 of the Staff Report, and administrative fee changes. The amendments and administrative fee change, if adopted, would: A, increase the household solid waste rate from $406.14 to $415.75. B, extend participation in the residential curbside trash recycling and organics collection program to multi-unit dwellings permitted under the county's Expanded Housing Options Ordinance, EHO. And C, increase the fee for hauler permitting for collection vehicles used to transport solid waste for disposal from $150 to $300. And D, administratively change the leaf and wood mulch delivery charges for half and full load from $60 to $75, respectively, to 70, and respectively to $78 to $93. And item I, I move the county manager's recommendations to adopt the ordinance to amend the DES, Development Related Fees, as depicted on the DES Permit and Plan Review Fee Schedule for Chapter 22, Street Development Construction, Section 22-7, Chapter 57, Erosion and Sediment Control, Section 57-8, Chapter 61, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, Section 61-4, Chapter 48, Flood Plane Management, Chapter 60, Stormwater Management, and Chapter 23, Subdivisions, Section 23-11, of the County Code of Arlington County, Virginia, related to charges for the review and approval of engineering plans, building permits, right-of-way use permit fees, and other related permitting, construction, and inspection services, the review and approval of subdivision plans, and the administration of public improvement bonds as shown in Attachment A of this Staff Report, effective July 1, 2024.
Thank you.
So these are the three items.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion at all?
Only, only very briefly. These are very reasonable increases. Some are actually surprising to me that they were so low, like, for example, the residential solid state, the trash removal fee, because it's a very complicated operation, and it has been, you know, impacted a lot through inflation. So I think that staff has done a very good job in trying to curb the financial impact for individual households and still uphold a very, very robust service and actually expand it, as we see here. Thank you.
Exactly. I'll simply add that the mulch is a really good deal. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motions pass 5-0. Thank you so much. And now that brings us to items J through L. Mr. DiFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move item J, the county manager's recommendation that we adopt the ordinance attached to the Staff Report to amend the zoning fee schedule and inspection services fee schedule to CPHD development-related fees as depicted on the inspection services and zoning fee schedules related to building and trade permits, administrative changes, form-based code applications, site plan applications, administratively reviewed permits and requests, certificates of occupancy, variances, use permits, and other fees as shown in Attachments A and B of the Staff Report, effective July 1, 2024. I also move item, or number K, part of this motion, which is the county manager's recommendation that we adopt an amendment to the Arlington Transit Passenger Fair Ordinance to increase art and specialized transportation for Arlington residents' Star Fairs, to be effective July 1, 2024. And finally, I move L, which is the county manager's recommendation to adopt the fiscal year 2025 Department of Parks and Recreation fee resolution as Attachment, I guess it's Attachment I of the Staff Report, or Attachment 1 of the Staff Report, I should say. So J through L.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Anything you'd like to say about your motion, Mr. DiFranti?
Briefly, this is alignment on our, on some of our development fees for J. And there's increased cost of construction, so it's reasonable, if you take a look at the Staff Report. The K reflects we are aligning with Metro, which is increasing fares slightly. There's still the low-income exception for Metro, and there, and we also have such a program. And there's also fee reductions for students. And then finally, Department of Parks and Recreation, I think it's 7% that's mentioned in the Staff Report, but those are reasonable increases to move towards cost recovery, but also balance. And we do have exceptions for low-income residents, and I believe some are seniors over 55, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. That brings us to items M through O. Ms. Cunningham.
First, I'd like to thank the chair for the blissfully short items that I received. I'm not sure how I got that, that long straw this time.
You remember, you took the earlier item, too?
I move item M to adopt changes to the Arlington County Fire Department hazardous material cleanup fees as listed in table, in the table in Attachment 1 of the Staff Report. Further, I move that, item N, that we adopt a new treat no-transport fee and an increase to in-person qualified healthcare provider fees in the Arlington County Fire Department. And finally, I move item O, which is to adopt the fiscal year 2025 Fire Department Special Event Fee Schedule, which is shown as Attachment 1 of the Staff Report. I think it's 1, not I.
I think it's 1.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Anything you'd like to say about your motion?
You have a second?
You have a second?
Oh, oops, thank you, thank you. Keeping me on track. Thank you. Anything you'd like to say?
Sure, just very briefly, this is part of our overall effort, which I applaud the manager, to make sure that our fees and our costs do align where they can. We hadn't looked at that in a little while, and I, we have now done a first pass, and we'll have some more work to do to make sure we build in inflation so that we don't get behind again. And each of these fees reflects the changes in salary that we have negotiated as part of our collective bargaining. And I particularly want to call out two things. In item N, we are, for the first time, allowing reimbursement for, if you call for an ambulance and are treated on scene, we, this is a federal law change that enables us to get reimbursed for that. And that's great to the universal healthcare point. Sometimes going to the hospital and transporting is really not the best thing. It may be an insulin check or something to that effect. So this is great progress. And then the third is the special event fees. We needed to raise them, though I do want to tag for my colleagues that that is a burden for some of our bid partners and our nonprofit partners and cultural groups. And so we probably need to this week, this year, do a little bit more looking at, are there some grant funds available or fee reductions? That's it.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. That brings us to items P through R. And my hard-working vice chair, Mr. Karen Tounas.
Yeah, I haven't seconded bite of the apple. So I move item P, I move the county manager's recommendation to adopt an increase in the photo speed monitoring monetary civil penalty in highway work zones and school crossing zones from $50 to $100, from $50 to $100 effective July 1, 2024. I further move item Q to adopt increased fees related to off-duty details, including but not limited to special events, effective July 1, 2024. And finally, I move item R to approve the proposal fiscal year 2025 pay plan I set forth in Attachments 1 to 7 to this agenda item.
All right, yes.
Seconded.
Hi, Mr. DiFranti, yes.
I have to say, on item P, I've, the increase in the, in the photo speed monitoring civil penalties, I have to say, I struggled myself with that, but especially because it's about school crossing zones and highway crossings also, I find it more than adequate and appropriate to increase the fee to where all jurisdictions in the region are $200. I'm very comfortable with that. If it was something that was, you know, more universal, we could have more of a conversation. But here, I believe that there is absolutely no reason to have.
Yeah, we want people to be slow around our schools. Any other comments? Are we all, all right, all in favor of the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And now I have a question for our council. Does that mean we have a budget, or do we have to vote it on it all again? We've got a budget, right? We have a budget, colleagues. Thank you. Well done, well done. All right. Now, the talking part, the talking part, which is the budget guidance. And we have had a lot of talking about the budget guidance. Budgets are, you know, values statements, and we all kind of worked it through. And I think if we can put that up on the screen, we'll get started. And I'll just kind of work us through it a little bit. I'm not going to read everything because this is six pages. Well, a little over five. But for people to see, and I will just check if anybody's got any comment. If I move too fast, colleagues, then please let me know. And if you've got something you would like to say. And I realize we may have some motions offered. So we did a preamble. We've tried to work through, basically, kind of calling out a little bit the situation that we think we are in. And it is, these are, these are hard times for local government with all of these reasons presented here, coming out of the, out of the pandemic. We've got our high commercial office vacancy rate. It used to be that all those offices were really a good thing for us, better than the rest of the region. And now Falls Church has actually lowered their tax rate because they don't have many, many offices. So they're, they're not affected by this like we are. And of course, we're all very aware of the mental and behavioral health crisis that we've got, and the issues attracting and retaining our quality employees. And actually, all these challenges we have actually kind of press the, you know, and affect the issue of attracting, retaining quality employees. The cost of housing, obviously, is one of these. And another thing I have noticed that I think this budget, and increasingly, we are working across departments and even across organizations, we're working, cooperating really much more closely with Arlington Public Schools. And I think that's just a part and parcel of the kind of issues we're facing in moving into the 21st century. I think it's a good thing, but it makes it a lot more complicated. So we have also really taken advantage of the one-time funds we had. And that is very unusual, colleagues. Some of this, for some of you, this is your first budget. You probably won't get this again, just saying. But we use that to really jump-start some important programs and put one-time money where we felt it was appropriate to put one-time money, but that could really have an effect moving forward. And I also said, I wanted, we sometimes all talk about what we've added, and the manager, of course, gave us a really good, strong budget base. And then we're just kind of tinkering around the edges in a way. But I do think it makes it stronger, and is responding to all of the comments that we heard. You know, not only did we have a lot of work sessions and public hearings, we also have our Open Door Mondays and emails and individual meetings with groups. So we've taken a lot of input over the last few months, and it's all developed into this budget. If you could scroll down a little more. So first area we're looking at is community well-being, is what we call it. So first area we're looking at is community well-being, is what we call it. That youth programming manager position that Mr. Schwartz mentioned, I think, is really important because, again, for the cross, cross-departmental, cross-jurisdictional aspects of what we're trying to do here. So that that position is added. We've added a fair amount of after-school programming money, one-time funding to get this started, and sort of as a grant going on for two years. We'll see how it goes. There was the ongoing funding already in there. Also partnering, we think partnering with APS will be very important. It's quite likely that some of this may be with nonprofits to provide programs in the schools, but that is to be worked out later. And we will be reporting on this progress. And again, the the manager will be helping out with that, the youth program manager. Nature centers. Again, we'd heard from a lot of people about nature centers, and we realized there's a real connection between nature and mental health, of course, and that there could be some great ways that we may help our young people connecting more with our nature centers. And even now, there is programming. Our nature centers staff sometimes do go into our schools, and we're hoping maybe more of that could happen. And I think when they go, they bring things like snakes and turtles, which makes it a lot more interesting. Next, keep going, please. If anybody, just interrupt me if you'd like to. And then I talked about just simply a part of the values statement, the really close relationship between poverty, the criminal justice system, and mental health. We really don't want to criminalize poverty. We don't want to criminalize mental health issues. But our jail often ends up being really a de facto mental health hospital and providing emergency services, which it's really not quite set up to do. And we are trying to help out and support the sheriff in providing more services there. But that's a, that's a social issue. It's nationwide, and we're doing our best to to address it as best we can. So we're continuing to try to support, support the sheriff in what he's doing in the jail and support medical help there, and also diversion services to keep those as much as we can, those in mental health crisis, out of the legal system. We started up our our first pilot on our notice of funds availability to to work with nonprofits, a different way of allocating to a lot of our, allocating funds to a lot of our nonprofits. We're not quite sure we're totally comfortable with how it all worked out. We appropriated some extra money, and all of these are worthy organizations. We'll be talking about this, I'm sure, in the future, and how we, I think, will be doing some adaptations. I think it was a good, a good start, though. Climate and energy resilience. I think this is one of the longest, and there's a lot here, which I don't think I'll read all through, but I think it illustrates how anxious this board is, and I think the staff to get going on some real climate action and climate mitigation and energy resiliency programs. So we put in a fair amount, a lot of 2.5 million in one-time funds, and that's to accelerate our actions and make it clear that we really want to be addressing these needs. And there are a lot of priorities in there. I think I mentioned wanting to do more solar on every roof if we could. Can't do that for a while, but we can get started. And also, there are aspects of energy equity and helping folks that maybe do not have as much, as many resources to also be energy resilient, and I think we'll be doing more of that. And I liked the last one, again, this cross-departmental work, working with the Career Center at APS, to work on workforce development and get more of our young people perhaps getting into this field of the green, green energy and the green economy.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please. Mr. DeFranti.
Just succinctly on this one, a particular thanks to Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Karen Tonas. We all care about this, but you guys have been working this, and this is not to denigrate the those who've been on the board before.
Oh, you can denigrate those that have been on the board. It's all right.
Like me. This is progress that you helped deliver.
Yes. It's why we bring in new people. It's good.
Yep.
It's very good. Yeah. And it's not that we haven't been supporting this, but it's great to get new folks on 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 board. Yes.
It is also true that the dollars weren't always available for that.
Right.
So and this is a unique opportunity. We will talk about that a little bit later.
Yeah, we will.
It's a good frame to be.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's a good spot. All right. Housing. And I also do want to give a real shout out to Mr. Karen Tonas, who helped put together this document. I really appreciate that, and everybody. Housing, obviously, a major issue. We, you saw the extra money we've been putting in for AHIF eviction prevention. We were doing a study. I think there will be more probably public work sessions down the line about how we address housing, and it's finding, some statistics are showing us that eviction prevention may in many ways be the most effective way. So we're going to be looking at how to be really effective with the funds that we have over the long run, and I expect a lot more conversation about that, because we really cannot afford to buy, Arlington County cannot buy us out of the housing crisis. We've got to figure out a lot of ways to be as effective as we can and efficient as we can with the funds that we have. I know that we're going to start this low-residential study, which we'll consider otherwise known as lot coverage, that people have been talking about for a long time, many of our residents, and we'll start looking at possible changes to our requirements on permeable surface and tree cover on residential lots. We also, as mentioned, put in more money to help lower the AMI requirements for affordable housing down to more, supporting more at the 30% level, which we have heard a lot about and would like to do. And then, as I said, I talked a bit about the eviction prevention. We added some full-time employees as well there. I think, oh, the tax relief program, yes, that we looked at quite closely a few years ago. Stop, don't, 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 don't keep scrolling. Thank you. Stop right there. Thank you. We talked about that a few years ago. I think we'll probably take a new look at that. Real estate tax relief is a, it's a complex issue. But as we do, obviously, the tax increases, people on fixed incomes have, can find it harder and harder to live here and stay in the homes that they own. And we're trying to find a way to balance, balance all of these needs, and it's not easy. This is one of our our methods, and I suspect we'll be talking about it now. I suspect colleagues may want to talk about housing, but if not, I will keep moving. All right. I see no lights. The next one, economic resiliency. We're all really pleased with Commercial Resiliency Initiative, now 2.0, you know, and really a shout out to staff that's really trying to innovate and adapt to really rapidly changing circumstances, which is always a challenge for government to move quickly. We'd probably like to move faster, but but we're really doing pretty well, and thank you for all of what we've been doing. So we are continuing to invest in this interdepartmental approach that will get more innovative uses for buildings and allow owners to reposition their assets to better meet sort of changing demands, which I think is, things are changing very rapidly, and we need to meet that, but within the parameters to make sure that we keep Arlington a good place to live, work, and play. We're also investing more in small businesses and entrepreneurship. AED had a great program, which, when the manager was trying to hold a very tight budget, he cut back on some. We added some of that back in. I think that's really important, and I think Mr. Karen Tonas would like to say something.
So that I don't forget it for later and that it's stated. And for the record, the restoration of relaunches not meant to be just continuing with the program as it was formulated in the past, but evolving it based on the very successful previous delivery. So that, so is it a disambiguation statement?
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, at the neighborhood level, we have a number of alliances that are doing hard work in placemaking and are our partners, and we have added some funds to Clarendon, Columbia Pike, and Langston Boulevard alliances, and also have a little seed money for a similar entity in Green Valley, which we will see if they can use that. Yes, Mr. Karen Tonas?
Also to that, it is very clear that Clarendon, Columbia Pike, and Langston Boulevard have a completely different footprint than than the Green Valley, which is a smaller neighborhood, right? The, the, the language here just suggests that the structure and the principle of what has worked in other neighborhoods is going to guide the idea of creating a placemaking, you know, entity in in Green Valley, which it had before, not, not, you know, replicate the full extent of the Langston Boulevard alliance.
Yeah. Well, we will see. Okay. Moving on, attracting and retaining frontline employees and honoring the service of volunteers or increasing stipends. We've noticed in in looking at a few things. First, the board added bonuses for our uniform public safety personnel and certain DHS employees. These are the folks who are really on the front lines, and they've been affected by inflation, of course, and we ourselves have a lot of recruitment challenges that continue, and we are competing with our neighboring jurisdictions in wanting to offer as good a package as we can to attract and retain our good employees, our crucial employees. We also are expecting that the, all these issues are going to continue, so we're going to be doing some more looks at these things. Finally, on the last, we adjusted the stipends for election workers and Board of Equalization members. Those hadn't changed in, I think, well over a decade to adjust for inflation. And we, we know our election workers are particularly, it's not such a simple, easy task as it used to be. So we wanted to make sure we adjusted the stipends up for them. And the BOE members also use, spend an incredible amount of time on their work. EHO has added to that, and we're now, I think, about the equivalent of what Fairfax is offering, and I think that's long overdue. All right. Moving on. There were a couple of programs that that were were cut in the manager's budget, and we actually, as they say here, we appreciate eliminating programs that aren't providing the level of benefit they should or maybe are not as effective as they should be or have some other issues. We applaud that and really appreciate it. However, we heard from a lot of folks about how difficult this was going to be for them. So we put in funds, the board put in funds to allow some transition for the folks who are using the Behavioral Intervention Services and the personal trainer programs to allow some time for substitute services to be found or developed to meet the need in a more cost-effective, equitable, and appropriate way. And that's just easing that transition. Vision Zero, that's right. As I mentioned, we put in funds to expand the red light camera, speed camera enforcement efforts in our school zones. I think we're going to cover all of our school zones when this is fully up. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? All of them, which is great. And we have other Vision Zero investments to help make everyone safer on our roads, ongoing issue. Next issue is historic resources. We've had a lot of back and forth on this one, when we may discuss it here and now, which is fine, that we have put in one-time funding for additional historic interpretation and preservation support, particularly for the Arlington Historical Society's project, that they're doing a collaboration with our schools to memorialize the enslaved with stumbling stones. It's a really cool project. Again, it's cross, it's, it's, it's lots of different groups working together, and we really want to support that. It's our young people are doing research and creating the stumbling stones and installing them. And it's just a wonderful program. We want to make sure that continues, and it was very low cost. We're also financially assisting the Historic Society with some facility improvements. They, they continue to have some financial support for the Black Heritage Museum of Arlington. And then we have a very interesting purchase that we made, an area called the bottom. And we would like to have some study and figure out what is the best way to to utilize that that asset and figure out how to work that through, which is down here. We are making some suggestion about how that might be done. Now, I know we've had some dispute about how this should be, and I don't know if anyone wants to. I will invite comments if they would like to make them. Anyone would. Mr. DeFranti. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know, it sounds like the appropriate time. Should I?
Yes, this is it.
Okay. I think I've sent Ms., our clerk, Ms. Jacobs, an amendment that, let's see, is it possible to go back to the original language?
Which original language?
The one that, the one that's here. I just had.
You mean, compare the two?
Yeah, compare the two. So.
Good try, Ms. Jacobs. We'll try. Yeah.
So there's a lot, it's for me that provides equal financial support as part of the question. I think we had a, some discussion on Tuesday about this. I, I've taken some additional, an additional edit that Ms. Cunningham might suggest, which I would ask Ms. Jacobs if you could help with in the, in the revised DeFranti amendment to take out. There was a question about how much specificity. And so with respect to the bottom in particular, I would propose that we, if you are able, Ms. Jacobs, just to cut out the last sentence following the word entity and put a period at the end of the word entity and cut the rest of that out. Ms. Cunningham's argument was that that was consistent with some of the concerns that have been raised, which is, we don't in all ways want to be overly prescriptive. I did have some questions as to clarity. This is something that, you know, we had some discussion about last week. I do think it's important to be, or on Tuesday, and I do think it's important to be specific. There's some other areas where perhaps we're not, but I think this is useful in this case. And so the, the DeFranti amendment is what I move in this case.
Okay. Is there a second? Second to the amendment?
I can second that.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, sure, sure, sure. I appreciate, we'll have some discussion. I'll invite comments from, from colleagues. I do appreciate, Mr. DeFranti, you, some of the adjustments. This is less worrisome to me than than the original version, and I appreciate that. So I will think about this a little bit. Anybody want to make any comments about this at the moment discussion, or we could just go ahead and vote? Mr. Karen Tonas? Because you, you did a lot of work on this. Thank you. Drafting a whole lot of it, back and forth. Thank you.
Yes, and I appreciate, I mean, the, the, I think there is a lot of overlapping in the, the language here. There is a specific mention of the, of the, of the appropriate amounts for the Black Heritage Museum and for the Arlington Historical Society. I believe that there is some, this is from one time, correct, Mr. DeFranti? I think that there is a, there is a legitimate concern about whether this kind of appropriations, this doesn't affect the stumbling stones and memorializing the enslaved, which is a direct grant for a very specific purpose. There was some concern about whether this should be handled through the Historic Support Fund that we have, Historic Resources Fund, and whether this is not kind of a circumventing or, you know, having a parallel process to that. I have some appreciation for this, and I, and I have to say, I, I am, you know, positively inclined to support Mrs. DeFranti's specificity here. However, I want to make very clear that in the future, we have to procure that we get this kind of appropriations through the process that's already in place. Last year, it didn't work very well. We, we need to review that this year, so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to do that. Until then, I give it the benefit of doubt.
Thank you. Ms. Coffee?
I have a question for Mr. Manager, if you don't mind. Do you have any concerns or comments on either version of this language?
I don't have any specific concerns. I would note that I think we're still working through some of the mechanics on Memorandum of Understanding with the Arlington Historical Society on the stumbling stones, I think with the County Attorney's Office, but beyond that, I, I don't have any specific comments, as much as you'd like me to weigh in.
That's probably better if you don't.
Mostly just in my first, first time through on budget guidance, making sure that I'm not missing anything I should be thinking of here. So that's all I had.
And I would like to say to you, this is your first time, your instinct to ask the manager about any views is really good, because sometimes the board moves forward with something that looks really great, and there's some major issues, and we'd want to know about it beforehand. So it's a good, it's a good question. Ms. Cunningham?
I would just amplify Mr. Karen Tonas's comment. I think we are, as a board, as a community, trying to move away from the board dictating or providing specific earmarks, and instead moving more to a transparent and competitive process for each of those. So I would encourage us to continue along that path, and my preference would be for for budget guidance not to need to go to that level of detail. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, for those of you who might be wondering why we're talking so much about this one item that isn't much money, it's a matter, it's a matter of governance and figuring out how we work and what's appropriate for budget guidance. I do not like particularly putting in set amounts of money. It could be that, you know, our staff would find out that maybe the Arlington Historical Society could do fine with 20, and the Black Heritage Museum would do better with another five, or vice versa, or something else. And when you put it in the guidance, you kind of don't allow staff to have that ability. I trust our staff. However, this has been worked on a lot. I appreciate all of the changes, which makes it more palatable to me than it was before. And so I am willing to support this amendment, and we will continue on. And next year, you won't have me here, and you'll be on your own. But it's been a good, it's been a good lesson just discussing this among us. Yes.
I did want to make one thing clear. Each board has different discretion. For me, this is a one-time, one-time. This is, you know, I do think that there's merit. I want to partner with staff on the historic preservation program in a lot of ways going forward. I've tried to craft it in a way that's, that's narrow, and so.
Thank you.
That's one thing that Ms. Flanagan wants particularly, but I also feel strongly. wants particularly, but I also feel strongly, so I understand the concerns here.
Okay, that's fine. That's all right. Thank you for, thank you for saying that. Yeah, and next year, I mean, I would venture that at some point, we may find soon that the Historic Resources Office is going to need another staff, but that's for another budget and another time. All right. All in favor of Mr. DeFranti's amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes 5-0, so that becomes part of the main motion, correct? Okay, if we can slip, are you able to sort of slide that in, Ms. Jacobs? Yeah, and then just slide, yeah, good. Put that in there and then just delete that.
The 20th century's most impactful invention, cut and paste.
It's wonderful. And I remember when it was cut and paste. Actually, I never did do paste. I did Scotch tape. I mean, yeah, what? Okay. Slight digression. So you would type things on a typewriter, not a computer, all right? Or write them out by hand, and then you'd have to put it all together. And if you wanted to move a paragraph, you had to cut it out of the paper that you'd done, and you would tape it to the place where you wanted to put it. So those of us who go way, way back remember having papers on the floor with Scotch tape. If you were doing a large paper, that was a lot of work and a lot of Scotch tape, but it was way easier than having to retype the whole thing manually. Okay. History lesson done. I'm sorry, you're going to be glad when I'm gone.
Still 1987, which...
That was 1970, 70 to 73, you know, that's when I was doing this. It was a long time. We used to have something called a whiteout. All right. Public schools, I'm happy to talk about this another time over a glass of wine. All right. Public schools, fiscal sustainability. Last thing here, do want to mention, we do continue our revenue sharing principles with Arlington Public Schools. I actually was in a meeting with the county council PTAs and one of my, one of our school board colleagues, and talking about revenue sharing with them. They were wondering about the revenue sharing agreement, you know, and we both kind of agreed it probably needs to be revisited, which happens over the years, and it's a good thing to do. I think we probably will be revisiting it. We wanted to note the concerns that were expressed by both our own Fiscal Affairs Advisory Committee and the School Board's Budget Advisory Council about fiscal sustainability for our schools moving forward. They're using a lot of their reserves or one-time money for ongoing expenses, and I think that's going to become really difficult for them next year. Wanted to say we are, we stand ready to work with our school board colleagues to try to help them find a path towards fiscal sustainability. And we recognize also that our school division, lots of school divisions across Virginia continue to work with the General Assembly to invest more appropriately in our schools across Virginia. Hopefully that will get somewhere. I was actually successful in that effort many, many, many years ago on the school board, and then it all got cut over the years by various governors, mostly Republican. And I just simply, as I think the manager mentioned, how important our schools are to us. We, our community remains committed to, and actually, all of our economic and community health depends on excellent schools, and we want to see them succeed absolutely. All right. That is it. I think I could now move adoption of the budget guidance before us, correct? Yep, seconded. All right. Any more comments at this point? I will ask for comments in the, because we do have some big thank yous and bouquets to throw to our staff and a few other people when we're done. Mr. Karantounas, did you want to have some comments here?
No.
Later? Yep, that's fine. Okay. All in favor of the budget guidance, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We have a budget. We have budget guidance, and it's only, what time is it? 10:42. Wow. All right. Colleagues, any comments that you'd like to make? I know we really need to thank our staff, and I'd like to thank you all. Maureen, why don't you start? Ms. Coffey?
Yeah, I'll try and not take up too much time, but I, you know, want to start off by thanking our staff on one very specific thing, which is estimating the renter's burden from taxes. I know that, you know, one thing I've been asked in the last four months is whether I ever feel like people aren't taking me seriously or really giving credence to the things and requests that I make. And I think this is one place where I didn't even explicitly ask for it. I think we kind of chit-chatted about it, but all of a sudden, you made the effort to put it in, and I think that's really important. And I look forward to continuing this and refining it and improving it. I know it's not a perfect measurement by any means, but the fact that none of our neighboring localities do it, the fact that we had nothing to even base it on or start with, this is a really important first step to understanding what everyone in our community contributes into our system and not excluding some people, or even, not excluding them, but excluding them from our understanding of what does this budget holistically look like. And so I just want to say thank you on that. On another topic, on the teen mental health work, I think this is a place where I became very acutely aware of the learning curve and the growth edge that I had as a first-time board member, with something that is so fundamentally critical to so many in our community, but also very, very difficult in terms of the number of different gears in the system and different people and different problems and working across the advocates who have come to us, across my colleagues, across our staff. I think, you know, what we have in here is a really, really important step forward, and I know it's going to take a lot of work to implement and to do it right, but, you know, I'll be here every step of the way, and I look forward to doing that. Another topic that I think our manager highlighted, but I think I would like to highlight again, is increasing our paid leave from 10 weeks to 16 weeks. For those of us who know about childbearing or bringing a new child into this world, 10 weeks is not a lot of time, especially depending on how your individual pregnancy goes. There's a lot of health reasons, there's a lot of child developmental reasons that having more than 10 weeks is super important. And, you know, if we want to be a family-friendly community, if we believe in gender equity in our economy, we have to start that here with us as employers. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for really jumping on that pretty much as soon as I was like, I think this is something we should do. The level of support meant a lot to me. Housing, you know, I don't want to belabor the point. I think a lot of people are probably going to talk about that, but I think eviction prevention being really our best practice now and coming almost from the primary prevention public health framework, right, where if you treat the upstream causes of a problem, you actually save yourself money, you save yourself harm in the community, and making that our best practice, that housing comes first. And then a few other small highlights, the Street Safety Initiative investments for Vision Zero. To me, that's huge. I think one of the things I hear about most frequently that people are really concerned about is how they feel on our streets, whether that's speeding, whether that's the design of crosswalks and bike lanes and other things like that. And so the fact that with our one-time dollars, we were able to really genuinely invest in this, and we'll see if we can get as much done as ever in this year. Adding another full-time staff member for our racial equity work within the county is really important to me. Adding Sunday voting for what should be the most important election of our lifetimes yet again is really important to me. The schools, I think, you know, this is a conversation we're all going to continue to have to have, but I'm glad that we were able to get to a place where we could provide some additional support, some assurance for increased teacher pay and a lot of the other tier-one priorities that we all have across the county and the school system. And then I'll wrap up to say just thank you to my colleagues and to our whole staff. I'm really glad that there's only one first time that I have to go through this, and next year, I hope to take everything I've learned from this year and be a little bit better at it. But it's so great to have colleagues that are so supportive. The number of conversations we have all had over the past two months is many, and every single one helps me in my understanding. And to our staff, who I don't really know when you slept throughout this process, but it's really, really impressive what you managed to do and how well you managed to do it. And I hear all the time how great it is to work with you and for you, and I hope that that comes through. I hope you feel that, and we're very grateful to have you, and I'm very grateful to have you. So thank you all throughout this whole process, and I will end there.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to go next? Mr. DeFranti, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm going to pull my timer, and I don't think I can do three minutes, but I have to do six minutes. So first thing...
I have another one here, so I'm good with it. Go for it.
Great. So when I sought to serve on the county board, I had five priorities. One was economic development, housing, climate, schools and our young people, and hunger. On economic development, we had a manageable budget because of the new construction that came in. We would not have been in that reality. So the overarching narrative of our office challenges is still relevant, but we're growing to help make up for that with residential and other things. And so that does not mean we are out of the woods, and I do think the chair is right that we may have a very, much more difficult budget next year. But economic development has to be key. I'm glad we were able to restore the two planners. And it's mindful, there are hard decisions that this, that the board made on Amazon that is making, made our budget fundamentally different, and we have to keep recognizing that. So, and that is true about other future economic development decisions, and we took action on consent today with a couple of them. On housing, I am very grateful we were able to do a million. There's a continuum of housing needs from homeless to housing affordability that reaches up, that we can have an impact on. I do think that we need to understand better exactly the level of 30% and below units, but from my time working for Habitat for Humanity and Rebuilding Together, as a federal advocate, low-income housing for 30% below is part of that continuum, and so I'm so grateful we were able to do the 1 million. That's above and beyond everything that was in the slides. We did a ton for housing this year, really proud of it. On climate, I sort of stole my point, but this is linked to the thank yous. Ms. Cunningham, you led us, and I'm supposed to be climate, but you led us forward beyond that. And so really grateful for that. That does not mean that my original goal of 100% renewable electricity by 2035 is going to be easy. We have to have some changes at the state level to do that, and that may be out of reach, but we have to try so hard to get there. So on climate, really pleased. On our schools and our young people, one of our advocates is still in person, just so proud. I started my career doing Teach for America in 100% free and reduced lunch school in Houston, where Barbara Jordan grew up, and I have not felt like I've done something that could be measurable. It's great to invest in our overall schools, but I think that this young, this funding is an added measurable, deliverable, in addition to the other budget years where we've done, where I felt like we did some things. But this has the potential to be really central to that work that I started a long time ago. On hunger, we invested, we haven't talked about it much, we invested significantly more in AFAC because there's so many more families that are hungry. Saw Mr. Mang, and so there are lots. I'll keep going. Mini grants we also did, which was very successful, I'm thrilled about that. On equity, the race NOFA, I'm so pleased with the additional $900,000. I don't think we're perfect, but I do think we kept the integrity of the review, and we can refine it over the coming years. And certainly, I think it's progress. On our public safety, I was thrilled to be, we will not be able to do, as has been made clear over the past few days, all that we would wish, and our public safety entities would wish for us to do, but we did do something to try and keep faith with the spirit of collective bargaining while keeping the integrity of it. So I feel that the 2750 investments in our police fire, sheriffs, and very select group of DHS behavioral, very select group of DHS employees was a good step. On public safety, on criminal justice, so thrilled to do, we have to work on our medical in our jail, 100,000 there is going to help. Our one-time investments in the sheriffs will help, I believe, sustain morale or try and help us there. The 50 medical bracelets, I think, can help, as well as bond aversion, additional position is important. So the thank yous, I would like to note, we may have, we have a lower tax increase than Alexandria and Fairfax. So we were fiscally restrained, perhaps not fiscally conservative, but we were restrained and focused. And I think we invested and we were fiscally disciplined, sufficient with our values, and so we have less of a tax rate increase significantly than Alexandria and Fairfax. That doesn't mean it's easy on our residents, and I understand that challenge. The thank yous have to be, in addition to Ms. Cunningham, I would not, I have a different perspective on family care today than I did a year ago because we now have a daughter, but I am thrilled that we went from 10 to 16 weeks, and we wouldn't have done it without you, Ms. Coffey. So thank you. Mr. Karantounas, hardworking is exactly right. You are everywhere on this, and it's gratifying to see, you know, in all ways, you were stepping into being a vice chair and gluing us together. And so just really grateful there. And Madam Chair, the grace and leadership, and I know you're going to run, you're going to use every second through the remainder of the year, but you've also been teaching us and showing us how to carry on the community, and I'm super grateful for that. So without just being nice and cheesy to board members, I do want to say, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Meredith, Ms. Cowan, Mr. Stevenson, and Mr. Schwartz, you have worked relentlessly, and I hope when you go home today, you're proud of what you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. And really, just barely over six minutes. Congratulations. No, thank you. Thank you for all the kind words. Ms. Cunningham?
Mr. DeFranti and I have a bet about the end time, so I may have to...
Oh, I think that's cheating.
Filibuster. No, just kidding. Yeah, I also want to start with thank yous to staff and to my colleagues, and really to the community as well for bearing with me. I admit I had a lot of questions, and most of you gracefully, most of the time, engaged with them, and I very much appreciate that. And I would also extend that to my family, who found me asleep under budget books with pencils at times throughout the last couple of weeks, so. Okay. So my goals for the year were threefold, climate, connection, and housing and planning. And so I will highlight some areas in that. I think on climate, I was delighted that we were able to take some of that very unusual one-time funding due to bizarre GASB federal accounting standards, but to put it towards what is incredibly important to people of all ages in our community and also to this board, which is accelerating our already strong performance on climate, to really reach faster towards the goals that we have set for ourselves. And I think part of what's most challenging about that is it really, it's not one person's job, it's every person's job. And so I applaud the manager for efforts to date to try to get us organized around that, and also remind him that we'll be meeting quarterly this year to make sure that we're making really good progress on that. I'm excited about that. You know, I'd highlight on climate, we did make a major additional investment in energy, which includes kind of education and heat islands, so recognizing that we as government can only pull so many levers, we need to support our residents and businesses in making those changes as well. I think several of my board colleagues and I have made a commitment to working on a climate resolution this year. I think that will be an important additional guidance. And finally, on the low residential study, you know, the importance of permeability and tree cover have been very much elevated during a lot of conversations, and it is hard. It is hard to go back and look at those standards that we last touched 20 years ago, but I think we acknowledge that we need to. Second, I might take three for each point. Okay.
I don't think that's allowed.
Yeah, 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 but then I'll win my bet. Community, connection, and well-being. You know, I started the year with a focus on people first, and I think our budget really does reflect that from the FMLA investment in our staff, the hiring bonuses and changes to reflect a different workforce and how to attract and retain them, and particularly continued work on public safety to honor the collective bargaining, but also show that we want to do more there. Youth programming, others have said a ton, super important, and I'm excited, we're both doing the tier-two and tier-three interventions, but also pushing ourselves, and again, across departments, and not just across departments, but across school and county to really get this right, or try it, get it wrong, and then get it right for our young people, nature centers, same thing, and nonprofits. You know, I think the nonprofit NOFA we will learn from, and I want to really reiterate that as we move into RFPs for several of our nonprofits for core services, that the full intent there is to fully cover the base cost of services there during that RFP. Finally, on housing, I think my colleagues have said most of it, it's really important to us. It's important to have planful approaches to both the physical capital stock, but also the interventions to support folks when they are in need, and I appreciate the diligence the team has made in looking at metrics there. Finally, I promise you, I want to just make a comment about sort of our fiscal restraint and transparency. It is really important to me that, first of all, that we're transparent about what we're doing, and I think we, in the longest budget guidance ever, tried to get you inside the heads of the board members. Secondly, I do think that we, every decision we make, we need to look at, is it fiscally responsible for the community? And I have attempted in the first pass-through to do that, including to the manager's credit, you know, coming in with a list of many proposed suggestions and walking through them and thinking about how to pull more dollars out of the budget. Also to the DMF team, you know, working through the mystery of how we really do... Also, to the DMF team, you know, working through the mystery of how we really do plan for vacancies. So you see frozen vacancies in there, frozen positions, but that's a very small portion of the actual savings we build into the budget around vacancies. And finally, the reserves question. So I pushed pretty hard on, we have some of the lowest reserve standards of our peers. That's in part because we're really good at managing them, and the rating agencies trust us, and we've maintained that AAA bond rating. But there, the world is changing a little bit, or there's some signals that it might be. So I appreciate that during this time where we could, we increased the reserves. Sorry, one more, finally. The auditor role. I just want to clarify for the community that we are committed to the county board auditor role. We had turnover this year, and I was particularly confused and rather frustrated initially until I finally understood it, which is that the budget does fully fund the replacement of the auditor position as quickly as we can get that person up. The posting is out there. And then it assumes that we'll have six months of the second in command, and that we will probably not hire the third in command until late in the year or beginning of the next fiscal year. So I just want to reiterate the board's commitment to rebuilding that department.
Thank you. Only a tiny bit longer than Mr. DeFranti, but good. No, this is excellent. I'm really, these are great statements. Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first, one little thing. Everybody remembers how we started this year, and I have to say sigh of relief that we are dodged the bullet, that we have dodged the bullet of metro funding for this year.
For one year.
I cannot overstate how happy I am about that, and how concerned I am for the second round. Number two, I want to start by saying that the tax rate discussion that we have was a difficult one. For me, that should be for everybody, I think, for this entire board. I think that, you know, we actually focused on outcomes, and we saw what this means, and we, and it was very clear to us, as Ms. Coffey just said, that the burden is actually expanding to everybody, and the growth of this budget that is needs-based is not only carried in this, with our decision by those who have appreciating assets, but also for those who don't have appreciated, appreciating assets. So it's not only that the tenants, the majority of Arlingtonans, contribute to this budget, but actually contributes a little bit more than, than those who are backed by appreciating assets. So I always have this in mind. And that, for me, means four things. Number one, it means to be responsive to the needs of our schools, because this was one of the biggest conversations that we had. And yeah, frankly, it's the half of our total budget. We are responsive to that, and this is why this, for the first time, included. The concern about the sustainability of the, of the school budget is included because we are, among many other things, also, you know, focused on compensating our teachers properly as well. It is, we are, we are focused on being responsive to the compensation needs of our old workforce. Our employees who work for us all, and I, and I am really thankful to the county manager for having provided a base budget that is already responsive to that, to a very big degree. Being responsive to housing and the mental health crisis, the biggest, the biggest, you know, drivers here. I started this year by really focusing on AHEF and adding the appropriate, you know, muscle power to our biggest and most effective tool to produce affordable housing and, you know, make a dent in housing affordability in Arlington. And I am very, very pleased to see that we could get there. And in addition to that, we paid down Barcroft. Let's, let's reflect on that. $30 million, actually, we have paid down in less than six months in this, on this, on this investment. This is a very big, and this is also a, talk about reserves, et cetera. This is how Arlington County, actually, before we talk about reserves, which we contribute more to, we talk about managing risk. And this is for me important. And the fourth thing is we are, we are so responsive to the urgency to be a climate resilient community, which is actually a prerequisite for being a fiscally resilient community. So when, as I, as I left home today, and I was trying to think, what is my, the word that describes this budget this year? Last year it was balancing because we're still, you know, working through the inherited uncertainties from the pandemic and the growing community needs. And this year, it is about being interdisciplinary. So the team effort, amazingly important. The protagonist that is at, the NOFA process for, for community needs, the climate process, for which I really appreciate the partnership of everybody on this board, and the partnerships, specifically of Ms. Cunningham as well. Everything that has to do with economic resiliency, et cetera. All these positions in our budget have one in common. They are not anymore addressable with one type of a tool. We need to bring together departments, we need to bring together constituencies. I enjoyed discovering this new dynamic, and we have to do a lot more on this. To be very brief on that, one thing on the team effort that we do, being expeditious is, for me, the number one task after, starting tomorrow. We have to be able to absorb the money that we have appropriated to produce real outcomes in the field. Who asks for that? Are really impacted people. And they are impacted yesterday and today. So we have to respond the fastest we can to that. The second thing I want to say on, on climate, this is an amazing basket of opportunities that we framed in the, in the, in the guidance that we've given, but I still believe that this board has now a more of a reason to work on a climate resiliency resolution for the, for Arlington County, the same way that we did it with the equity resolution, and to remember again that climate justice, for example, is a major driver for, for success. And I'm not going to belabor that anymore. There, there are many other issues that I'm very thankful for, the support of my colleagues, especially for this, for support for small businesses, with the Green Valley Initiative and, and all this. The thank yous. Madam Chair, I think that you are the first on the line to be thanked for excellent leadership on, on this budget. This is true. This was a complicated budget, after all, more labor-intensive than anybody had anticipated. Mr. DeFranti, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Coffey, you have been amazing partners in that. And I also need to, to note that our, your, your staffs have been extremely involved. I mean, I would, I would like to mention Mr. Graham Weinschung in particular for the, for the amazing analytical work that he, that he did. Ms. Meredith Stevenson, Hughes, and Mr. Manager and Ms. Cowan, of course, we thank you for that. We know how difficult it is and how much time it took to get here. Thank you so much for, for everything that you have done. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am now-
You're under, you're, you're doing great. Thank you, thank you. For those who might be wondering, so we have these little three-minute timers up here, and at some point, we decided that, and we're actually doing really well. Everybody's helping each other just because we're in this position, we tend to like to talk, and actually, it's important for people to hear, hear from us. But we need to be a little careful, and I have been on boards where if I'd suggested this, they would have thrown them at me. So, and everybody's really been just wonderful about it. Thank you, which kind of eases me into the thank yous here, and I'm doing it for myself. Somebody else can get the second one. First, I think, Ms. Cunningham, thank you. As you may have picked up, Ms. Coffey and others, you know, so I started with cutting and pasting. I have never perfected spreadsheets on the computer. I really don't want to. I like it when people show me spreadsheets, they help me understand things. I do not like to do them. And Ms. Cunningham said she would help me with it, so thank you. It was a lot of hours, and some of them very late at night, maybe right afterwards, you fell asleep under all those books and pencils. Thank you. When it came to the budget guidance, I do like to write. I did do the first draft. But then Mr. Karantounas took it over and really worked with everybody, and expanded quite a bit, but did just wonderful work. Thank you so much, you two available at late hours. And I, at first, when I saw how long it was, in the end, I was a little horrified because it's just not my view of budget guidance. And now, I've decided, here today, I actually think budgets, budgets are value statements. We have everybody coming and talking to us. And I think we do the numbers, but it's important to say why you do the numbers, and I actually think the words are important. Pretty much all the time when I've been running, I have told people, you may not agree with me, you know, we're not always going to agree, but you, I want to make sure you always understand why I did, why I did what I did, why I voted the way I did, because that's really important for the communication with people. And I think this budget guidance, so we may have started a new, a new effort, we'll see how you guys do in the future, but I think it's not a bad thing. So thank you for all of the effort on that. There are new people on the board, it's been so exciting. And I think, Maureen, possibly, we could, of the number of items in this budget that are new because of a board member, I think you have the most. I do, I do. And it's because you came in with a different perspective. They were small items, they were incredibly practical, and you offered them, I said, yes, I think that's good. Thank you. And then, as Matt said, you know, Susan really went over the top on climate change, and that's absolutely great. Really like that. And then my two stalwarts here, we've been through this together, it's been, it's really a great team. I think the budget, as much as we try to be, I think, as much as our county, it's practical and it's caring, and that's what we all kind of aim for. We wouldn't be here, of course, without all of the work. I mean, we get to do all the talking, we played with these numbers, it's because of the incredible foundation our staff gives us. And Mark, and Emily, and Maria, and I think watching from home, probably Richard's watching from home or from somewhere, and Michelle, and everybody else. I mean, it's just been an incredibly large effort. Thank you. I hope you guys, really, if I could order you, you got to get some rest tomorrow, because then we start the CIP, right? I had a little worry when we increased the FMLA, the Family Medical Leave, that maybe our entire budget financial staff will go on leave because they'll all be collapsing by the time we finish this. So please take care of yourselves. Don't do that. Thank you so much. I mean, it's really, it's such a team effort. And I guess I'll finish up here. On childcare, one note, listening to that, childcare hasn't gotten much better from when I raised my kids back in those cut-and-paste days. And then I saw my daughters going through it, and I was thinking, oh my God, things haven't gotten any better. I see right now my grandchildren are going to, when they have their families, it's probably going to still be. So y'all, we got to do better, and it's great that we're at 12 weeks. In Europe, they do a year or a year and a half, right? I mean, it's just 16, 16, yeah, well, we're doing 16 weeks, but I'm saying in Europe, it's just, I mean, it's like a, people, people are shocked at how this country handles childcare and families. I hope we do a lot better. I'd be happy to advocate for you when I'm not, not on this side of the, this side of the dais. So thank you for continuing to push it. We need to do a lot more. I think that's it. Thanks, everyone, for your patience and availability. The reason I've stayed on, people are probably wondering, why is she still here? I love the work. I learn something every day. And with new board members on, I'm learning more, which is just great. I love it. And it's because of the incredible staff that we've had to work with. And that includes, nobody's mentioned Min Chao, but she's always there. She gets copied every now and then when I get nervous about something, I make sure Min Chao's in the loop. We have incredible staff. It's such a pleasure to work with you all. I would not still be here without you. I absolutely would not. And I would be not feeling quite so cheerful about leaving if I thought the board were not in better shape. I think we've got a good board coming together here as a team. I think the county is going to be in good hands, and I'm going to enjoy the last, I don't know, whatever month it is, I have been counting them. I think we're at eight. At any rate, we've got a budget, it's a good budget. A lot of work went into it. It's one of the biggest things we do. Thank you all very much. Everybody rest up, have a good weekend, and see you back. Oh, I think I have it here, it's Wednesday. I've got a note here somewhere about when it is we're back. It's Wednesday, mm-hmm, at 3 o'clock for our carryover meeting. And I think with that, I can say we're recessed.
A blessed Passover, too.
Oh, yes, and Passover, that's why we're doing Wednesdays, should say that. Everybody have a good, a good Passover. All right. Richard.
Great.
Thank you.
Happy, happy, happy first budget, second.